The committee of finance will come to order for our first agenda today, February 28th. First up is House Bill 361-HD1 relating to Green Job Youth Corps. First up is DLNR.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. Laura Kaakua, Governor's nominee for the Deputy Director of DLNR. The department strongly supports this measure. We stand on our testimony and I just wanted to add a personal note that I'm a graduate of the KUPO program and got involved in conservation from being out there pulling invasives and planting natives and working really hard. But what we're seeing from this program is that it instills in youth Kuleana to take care of our natural and cultural resources and it also exposes our students and young adults to diverse career pathways that will help our economy moving forward. So, thank you very much for this opportunity to testify. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Next up is Hawaii State Energy Office.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Claudia Rapkuk. I am the Public Affairs Officer of the Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand in support of our testimony and I too will add just a brief note here. As a host site for a KUPO program through the Clean Energy Wayfinder Program, we couldn't be more thrilled with the caliber of students that come through our program and that really contribute to Hawaii. We have eight wayfinders on five islands and it's an excellent program and we strongly support it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Holomua Collaborative.
Joshua Wish for Holomua Collaborative and we stand on our testimony and support the Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is KUPO.
Mahalo Chair and Honorable Committee Members. My name is Kovika Riley. I'm a Vice President at KUPO. We submitted written testimony which we'll stand on. Just wanted to let the committee know, you know, we strongly support this program and have had the privilege to partner with DLNR in administering the Green Job Youth Corps in its first year and we're available to answer any questions you may have for us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is CARES. On Zoom.
Representative CARES is present?
Not available.
They are available, I believe. They have CARES in their case.
Good, how are you? Thank you.
Aloha. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Oh, Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of CARES. So, just providing comments. In 2020, CARES Act funded a short-term green jobs program in partnership with Hawaii-based nonprofit organization KUPO Corpsps, which enabled 350 workers, including recent grads, to be trained and to start giving back to Hawaii's economy and environment through green jobs. And because this was effective, the measure is requesting additional funds. So, in addition to addressing unemployment amongst youth and young adults, Green Jobs Youth Corpsps is an important part of the state's strategy to diversify the economy and reach our environmental and energy goals. The program invests in building young adults who are interested in working in the sustainability sector. So, thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Any questions for our City Auditor?
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing non-members questioned, Representative Moore called.
For DLNR, I'm not sure if you can answer this, but I just made the connection right now looking at the bill. It says, it mentions the Civilian Conservation Corps and in Kokee we have the Civilian Conservation Corps camp. Is that related?
Yes. Let's see, I want to, I want to see if there's anyone from my team that could provide specific details.
Alan though?
Alan Carpenter will come and share. Thank you.
No, Alan, because I'm curious, because if we get these people on board.
Right.
Are they able to use this camp now for housing?
So, good morning, Alan Carpenter, Assistant Administrator of State Parks. So, the CCC camp is operated by Huioloaka, right, a nonprofit that also runs the museum. It seems like this would be a perfect nexus, but it's not an automatic or requirement. But I think we would open that up for consideration. Yeah, they host a lot of volunteers and it would make sense.
Because if they had like projects up in Kokee where they go into the forest and do those invasive whatever, they could stay there for whatever time they need. Well, I'm not saying long-term now.
Right. No, it sounds, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you for the information. Thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to House Bill 203-HD1 relating to civil service. First up is DLNR.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair. The department strongly supports this measure. We stand on our written testimony and Alan Carpenter from Shipde and I are available if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, Members, any questions? Representative Garrett.
Thank you Chair, Shipde please.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee.
Thank you for being here. Just a quick question, trying to hope, hope you can help me understand what you're asking for here. In your testimony, you refer that all 34 of Shipde's technical professionals are currently exempt. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
Okay, and then, but further down, you mentioned that in 2014, the legislature passed Act 181 that required these positions to be converted to civil service.
Yes.
So, what has happened since 2014?
Well, initially, we went to D-Herd and to HR and DLNR and discussed the process. You know, the process requires us to classify the positions, which is a lengthy process in and of itself. We were advised at that time, initially, to use the existing classification of general professional rather than to try to create positions for architectural historians or archaeologists or what have you. I will say that, you know, despite this advice, that right in 24-point type on the classification specification for general professional, it says this cannot be used for people who, you know, for positions that require technical expertise, specific technical expertise. So, anyway, we initiated that process. It's a very lengthy and time-consuming process, made more so by the fact that at that time, D-Herd had one person doing classification for the entire state. So, we didn't get very far. In the meantime, what happened was that, you know, the job market changed dramatically and, you know, we went from getting a number of applications for every position to now we're down to one or none at all. I mean, I think in my testimony, in our testimony, we pointed out that for, we've had one architectural historian position that's been advertised continuously for a year. Just about a month ago, we got a single applicant after a year of advertising and fortunately she was qualified. She interviewed very well. We offered her the position and after thinking about it, she decided she could not afford to take it, even though over the last, well, you know, in the last nine years, those positions are now being paid 50% more than they were being paid when I arrived here. So, you know, we have, you know, in addition to the length of time that the classification process takes, we have sort of slow rolled it because of the recognition that we don't believe it'd be possible to recruit successfully without the exemption.
So, you're saying, so even with the 50% increase that the legislature authorized, it still wasn't enough for this particular applicant?
Yes.
And your hope is that by, this position is currently exempt though, you're not treating against.
It is, right. It is currently exempt. All of the technical positions are currently exempt.
Okay, so, again, just so I understand, so is it fair to say the department has been non-compliant with Act 181 since 2014?
Well, I'd say we have been unable to comply because the process is so time-consuming.
Okay, so which, so this bill purports to basically undo Act 181. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Members, any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 202-HD2 relating to historic preservation reviews.
Aloha. The department supports this measure with recommended amendments. We stand on our testimony and Alan Downer from Shipde and I are available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up is NAIAOP Hawaii Chapter. Not a pressing. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none members, questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill. Question, please, Representative Poitiers.
Thank you. For probably SHIPD. So, for the 6E review process, which is, could contain multiple steps depending on what the findings are, is there any particular step that you would anticipate making the determination to utilize third party or could it happen at any part of the process?
I, I thank you for the question. Again, Alan Downer for Department of Land and Natural Resources. I would say that at any, as I read the, as I read this amendment, at any time in the process, if one of those steps, SHIPD decides it cannot complete it within 60 days, then we would, we would seek a third-party reviewer.
Okay, thank you. In the testimony, it says the department doesn't have the funds to contract, doesn't currently have funds to contract with the third-party consultants, that it's difficult to determine a cost and are unable to provide a meaningful estimate. And then it further puts forward the idea of having the project proponent probably possibly take on the cost. So, project proponents often already have a consultant on their end to consult with SHIPD and to prepare the information that gets transmitted to SHIPD. So, I'm just curious in this scenario if they would then be hiring or paying for another contractor to consult with their existing contractor? If that's what the scenario would be?
Yes, they would have to be an independent contractor. They would not consult. They would, they would simply review and say, yes, this is, this report, whatever it is, complies with SHIPD's rules and it's, it's, you know, and then make a recommendation to SHIPD on whether or not we should accept it or whether we should turn it back for additional work.
If the third-party consultant, I mean, if the project proponent is also paying for that third-party reviewer, do you see that as a conflict or a non-conflict?
I think if they paid them directly, it probably, it is, it certainly would have the appearance of a conflict of interest. And so, what we're proposing is that the, that the contract would be entered into by SHPD and, you know, the project proponent would provide us the funds that we would use for the contract.
Okay, thank you. And one more question. Sometimes what appears as initially as a simple project with no anticipated impacts or no historic properties, especially on lands that are undeveloped or untouched, sometimes you get into it and then things come up and it turns into very significant, or it could turn into something very significant, especially if burials are discovered. So, would you anticipate any scenario where you would have to rescind the third-party reviewer, take that back for sensitive findings?
That's an excellent question. It's one that we wrestle with every day to some degree. Under, under the existing rules, SHIPD, once, once we have completed review, we are, we do not have independent authority, generally speaking, to say, we want to consider, reconsider the findings. Now, if it's burials, it's different, but if it's just an archaeological site, you know, then we're, we're sort of stuck. But if, burials are always protected regardless of where they're located and regardless of, geez, excuse me, regardless of when, you know, when they're found or where they're found. But just sort of generally, even, I mean, there is a process in place for those kinds of inadvertent discoveries, but it would not necessarily trigger a re-review. If the, if the permitting agency said, oh, you know what, we would like you, SHIPD, we would like you to reconsider, then it would, then we have authority. But it, you know, once a permit is issued, that permit is viewed as an entitlement and so stopping the project or rescinding the permit requires the whole administrative process to protect the property rights of the owner.
Okay. I think the, one of the main purposes of this bill is to quicken the review process. Would you anticipate any situations or, and I think that that is largely possible with this bill to expedite some of the processes, but there are instances possibly that could come up that actually even with third-party review might not result in a quicker process, especially like if you get to the mitigation planning stage, if that's necessary, and there might be some back and forth. Just curious if you would agree or disagree with that?
I'm sorry, couldn't hear the last part of that.
If, if you would agree or disagree that while this is intended to provide a quicker process of review, that situations could arise that would not, that would result in not a quicker process, even with third-party review?
Absolutely, yeah, you know, thanks for the question. Yes, I mean, I think there's no guarantee that third-party review would actually be quicker and there will be instances where, you know, we would, you know, when it comes to say data recovery planning or mitigation planning, that is, you're right, it may take back and forth and that has to be between SHIPD and the, and the project proponent and their consultants. And, you know, that, the third-party review in that instance would not make any difference.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any further questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 1183 HD1 relating to state parks. First up is DLNR.
Aloha, Laura Kaakua with DLNR. The department strongly supports this measure and we do have staff from State Parks here if you have any questions. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Anyone, anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none questions, members? Representative Kobayashi.
Just a comment for State Parks. You might look at whether you really need the words, solely, which is used twice on page five.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any further questions, members? We're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 1267 HD1 relating to the Department of Land and Natural Resources. First up is DLNR.
Aloha. The department supports this measure. We stand on our written testimony and are available for any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none members, questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 1405 HD1 relating to natural resources. First up is DLNR.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. Kalu Emanuel, Deputy with the Water Commission. The department stands on its written testimony in support of this measure and are here for questions if you have any. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, members, questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 953 HD1 relating to the Department of Land and Natural Resources. First up is DEBIT.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Chris Sadeyasu, DEBIT Director, and we stand on our testimony supporting.
Okay, thank you. Next is DLNR.
Aloha, Laura Kaakua for DLNR. The department supports this measure and stands on our written testimony. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none members, questions? Okay, next bill is, next up is House Bill 1090 HD1 relating to ocean recreation and commercial permits. First up is DLNR.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. Ed Underwood, Administrator with the Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation. We stand in strong support of this admin measure and here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Ocean Tourism Coalition.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Denver Kuhn on behalf of the Ocean Tourism Coalition. We are supporting DLNR in this. We've had further discussions with them, believe that this bill is necessary. We also believe it should be amended to kind of be passed in its original form. It was amended to include a task force, but given the time constraints and the problems facing certain areas around the state, we believe that the implementation of the original version is needed. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Trilogy Excursions.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Finance Committee. My name is Jim Kuhn and I stand on my very short-written testimony and concur with the Ocean Tourism Coalition's position on this matter. We support.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none members, questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill. House Bill 1089 HD1 relating to state boating facilities lease pilot program. Okay, first up is DLNR.
Chair, we stand in strong support of this measure as well.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Scott Allen.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Scott Allen and I work as an economic planner at the State Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. I'm a, or I have a master's in urban and regional planning and I'm a PhD student at UH Manoa. I am also a resident of Hawaii's harbor system and have been for over a decade now and I strongly oppose this bill. My opposition to this bill grows out of two primary concerns, the first being a lack of clear need for this pilot and the second being a lack of clarity on reporting of pilot performance. In regard to the first concern, DLNR's public testimony for the Water and Land Committee indicated the following. The department currently has two harbor facilities on Oahu that are under a public-private partnership, Wa Mariana Sailing Club and Kehe Marine Center. The department is requesting this measure so that it can pilot the same management model in a state small boat harbor with the intent that the program be expanded statewide if it is successful. Given the existence of two other harbor facilities operating under the same management model as what DLNR is proposing, there would be, there would appear to be no need to pilot a third. The two existing models should provide enough longitudinal, longitudinal data to evaluate their performance in comparison to the other harbors. The evaluation of their performance leads me to my second concern, which is that DLNR proposes to self-report to the legislature on findings and recommendations from the pilot program without offering metrics for how successes or failures would be determined. If the model is truly meant to be a partnership between public and private entities, these metrics should be determined ahead of considering other pilot programs or the expansion of existing programs and crafted alongside the harbor community to ensure reporting reflects the best interests of all users, including those who call the harbors home. Mahalo for the opportunity to present my testimony.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none members, questions? Representative Poitiers.
Just curious that this pilot project is for one harbor or facility?
Yes, it is.
Is there a specific facility?
The one we have in mind would be the Aloei Small Boat Harbor because we are in the process of going out for a request for development for the fastlands and we'd like to include the submerged lands. The reason why we did it as a pilot project is because of the difficulty we've been having with getting all the harbors under the same model. There's currently seven harbors in the state that operate as a public-private partnership and they operate very well. That's the model that's followed all over the United States, all, you know, Europe...
Thank you. Just wanted to know if there is a specific facility.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to test? Oh, all right, any more questions? Sorry. Seeing none, okay, we're going to move on to the next bill. House Bill 892 HD1 relating to small boat harbors. Nobody signed up to testify. Is there anyone wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill. House Bill 1511 HD1. First up is DLNR.
Aloha again. The department stands on its testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Border Water Supply.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Kathy Mitchell with the Border Water Supply. Manager Lau and Manager-in-Chief Engineer Ernie Lau and Deputy Manager Erwin Kawata would have liked to be here, but they're in a meeting with the mayor and they may be on, if they get off sooner, they may be on, online. House Bill 1511, House Draft 1, is, we strongly support this bill. Since the Red Hill fuel crisis in November 2021 and then the spill with the AFF, the firefighting foam in November 2022, the Border Water Supply does not have access to the data that the Navy has. And so, we are taking a proactive approach and we are installing monitoring wells to determine how far the fuel is traveling. I took a photo of the Department of Health, they did an analysis of, this is the analysis of the fuel spill. And what you see in red is the higher concentration of the fuel. We know that the fuel is, has moved west, southwest and north, northeast. So, we know that the fuel can move underground. We don't know how far it's gone off-site of the Red Hill. So, we've taken a proactive approach and we're installing four monitoring wells and an exploratory project, well project. And we need more monitoring wells off-site, off the Red Hill to determine and get new data on that migration, possible migration. So, we strongly ask you for your consideration on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none members, questions? Representative Ward.
Thank you, Chair. Border Water Supply, please. What is the shelf life of fuel that's leaking underground? In other words, you said it's migrating. Doesn't it get absorbed and something transforms it or is it always fuel and it just migrates like it's an organic entity? In other words, is there a shelf life? How long does fuel, when it goes into the ground, last?
I don't know. I'm not an engineer, but maybe Department of Health can share that information. We know that it's moving. We don't want it to go down into the aquifer. Once the aquifer is contaminated...
For sure, yeah.
It's difficult to, to get the fuel out.
Will this, will this bill and the monitoring still be relevant after they shut down or fill it, fill them with water or is this just until we get this Red Hill thing solved that it's pertinent?
When DOH did their analysis, they focused on the diesel and the oil. That doesn't really evaporate like fuel, jet fuel. The Red Hill crisis will be with us for some time after, even after the de-fueling.
So, this bill will never go away then?
This bill is needed for the monitoring wells so we know what's going underground and what's going on in the aquifer.
So, until they test negative, this will be very helpful then?
This will be very helpful, yes.
Okay, good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Representative Ayew.
Few questions, few more questions for Border Water. How, how long is it going to take after you get this money to, to construct the wells and we can start monitoring for...
Each well, given the planning, design, construction, about a year and a half for each well.
So, by the time we get this online, it might be too late?
It's never too late. We need to do this. Aside from the planning and design, there's also procurement. So, that takes time with the construction and then gathering the data, collecting the data over time.
Okay. And then, do you have any plans to build monitoring wells now?
We have one that'll be completed this year, this fiscal year, and three more for next fiscal year. That's under BWS.
Okay. And then, is there any plan to seek reimbursement from the Navy? And then, is there any plan to seek reimbursement from the Navy for this money, and if you're successful, would Border Water refund the state for this grant and aid money?
The Navy was, they receive appropriations in the National Defense Authorization Act, and BWS was not named, DOH was. BWS wasn't. That wouldn't stop us, but we're looking at other funding sources, federal funding sources, where, grants, where we can get them.
Okay, I don't think that, so Department of Health got money from?
Yes, they got reimbursed for the cost recovery. That was the first request. That was, I, and I heard in the hearing, it was 1.2 million, and then they asked for 200 something thousand, 223,000 for the second request. I don't know. That's pending.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I follow up? Border Water Supply, so if, are the wells that you have to add, the necessity of it, was it because of the situation, or were you planning to put it in, in the first place?
No. The, the wells that we're putting in, the four wells that we're putting in, is because of the situation.
Okay. Okay. So even more so, to Representative Ayew's point, are you seeking reimbursement from the Navy?
I can't answer that for Ernie Lau. It would be prudent, but I don't know if the Navy can, because it's not in their legislation.
Okay.
It was in the NDAA.
It has always been my position that the state should not pay for their mistake. They should be paying for their mistake. And the one I always bring up to everyone is Kahole Lave. We took the money from them, and then, and then we cleared them of responsibility, and we still have ordinances that we haven't recovered. So instead of taking money, we just need to hold them responsible. So are you doing that?
We are accountable for all the expenses. We have?
Are you trying to hold them accountable?
In every way that we can.
I think because these wells were created, the need for it was created by the situation, I would suggest that that's what you should be doing.
We are taking a proactive approach, because we can't wait.
I understand that. But, you know, to his point, I think that we, we may, at some point, as this measure moves forward, and we will move it forward, because I think it's important, and, but we may put a provision in there at some point in time that requires you to go after this and then reimburse the state at that time. So I'm just letting you know that this is something that the committee may, may consider.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further questions? Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 1101-HD1 relating to Stormwater Department of Transportation.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, and members. Ed Sniffin with DOT. DOT stands in strong support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Tax Foundation.
Not present.
Not present on the, okay, and next up is City and County of Honolulu. Late testimony that we just received. Onzu?
Hi. Good morning, Chair Yama Shida, Vice Chair Kirigawa, and members of the committee. My name is Don Safcheck. I'm Director-in-Chief Engineer for the City and County of Honolulu, Department of Facility Maintenance. We stand on our written testimony submitted, and wanted to also testify verbally to further emphasize our strong opposition of HB 1101. Protecting and enhancing Oahu's groundwater streams and nearshore environment is a shared responsibility, and storm drains, streams, and drainage ways are a shared asset for all the people and businesses of Oahu. In 2015, the Hawaii State Legislature recognized this, and through SB 1310 SD1, took the proactive and foresighted step of authorizing the counties to establish fee-based funding of stormwater services or stormwater utilities. Since the bill passed, the city has been working to implement a stormwater utility and fee. Under a stormwater utility, all properties, including United States federal government properties, would pay a fee representing their fair share of the costs of providing services and establishing a dedicated fund source. It is imperative that all who benefit from our island's stormwater systems contribute to the stormwater utility. We recognize that the stormwater fees on public property represent a budgetary impact on our fellow agencies, and including ourselves. The DFM will be obligated to pay fees applicable to our own facilities. To recognize not only the benefit of facilities such as harbors and airports to the public and our economy, but to also reward the beneficial actions already taken by, to reduce runoff and maintain Oahu's systems, the proposed stormwater utility would exempt large portions of impervious area on state properties that act as public roadways, including runways, internal roads, and docks. When this appropriate exemption is coupled with credits for stormwater management systems and federal permit compliance, the fees for state properties will be substantially and appropriately reduced. We're eager to remember, to memorialize this understanding with our state colleagues so that all of us can move forward together, and we strongly urge the committee to reject or defer HB 1101 at this time to allow for further discussion and collaboration with the state. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, questions? Representative Ward, followed by Kobyashi.
Don, City and County, please.
Yes?
First of all, thank you for your testimony and keeping the City and County honest, because they went to the neighborhood boards maybe six, nine, 12 months ago and said exactly what you just said, and then this bill pops up and said, hey, you guys in government are going to be exempted, i.e. the state. So thank you for keeping your word, because that's what your person said to at least my community. And the question is, how much of a fiscal hit will this create if this bill does get exempted, or that's maybe outside of your, your kuliana? Maybe Mr. Sniffin would know that one. How much money is Mr. Sniffin trying to save? May I call Mr. Sniffin up? Chair? Thank you, Don.
No problem. I'm, I'm here to stand by for any question.
Mr. Sniffin, how much money are you trying to save?
That's the difficult part, so.
You own a lot of roads.
I'll say that working with Director Safcheck is amazing. She's really good, and she's trying to make sure that we minimize the impacts to, to the state. But that being said, the estimates had ranged from 11,000 to 30,000, up to 2 million. So I'm not sure what the impacts are going to be.
$30,000 for all of your roads?
Yeah, because, well, just, this is based on exemptions for the roads and waivers from different processes, mainly because we spend 24 million every year for our stormwater program that the city connects up to as well. So there's, there's shared, there's already shared costs and shared responsibilities in our city-state programs. For us, if it's 30,000, I'm good. If it's 2 million, I got it, I got an issue. So that's what I'm trying to get to right now, is, is trying to make sure we can lock down some kind of number that we feel is appropriate and reasonable, that we can partner with the city on.
Thank you for saying that, Mr. Sniffin, because my district is saying exactly what you're saying. We got already taxed, and we're going to have another stormwater tax? I mean, what, what's, what's going on? I have a sidewalk, I have a roof, all of that stuff that isn't permeable is going to be taxed. And just for the record, in 2015, I voted against that HB 1310 to wage this. Thank you very much, Mr. Sniffin. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Representative Kobyashi.
How far away are you from any agreement?
I think, so at this time, we're getting, so the difficulty that, that we're having right now from the state side, we're hearing the, the range of numbers that this could be, from the 11,000 to the 2 million number. And, and again, working with, with Don is, is really good, to understand what the numbers could be and should be moving forward. But that being said, after the department pushes this out, there's another couple layers of enactment before these rules get put into place, or this, for the city. And in those steps, especially when it gets to council, I don't know what could happen. So my concern is that we're going to be hit with the 2 million in the future, whereas I'd rather be in that $30,000 range that we feel is pretty reasonable.
I mean, so is it that, number one, you don't know how much? You're willing to pay 11,000 to 30,000? But it could be 2 million?
Just based on estimates from the past, yes.
You know, I don't understand that. I mean, a ballpark is not the size of the universe. I mean, 11,000 to 2 million is not, it's, it's beyond belief.
It's based on exemptions. So if we counted all of our roads, all of our runways, all of our areas, it would probably be in the 2 million range. If we get exempted from, exempted from roadways, and we get some partial waivers from other facilities, it could be in that $30,000 range. But again, and this is what the department is recommending, these exemptions and waivers, to ensure that they, they memorialize the relationship between the state and the city. I just don't know what could happen as it, as it progresses on. That's the reason for this bill, to make sure we could quantify what our impacts would be from a financial perspective.
I mean, it, it seems to me that maybe the dollar amount should be established first. I mean, because obviously, you don't want to pay 2 million dollars, but I think City and County doesn't want to eat 2 million dollars either.
Agreed. And, but I believe, Rep, that from the department's perspective, we would be in that, that 11 to 30 range right now, 11,000 to 30,000 range. And I, and I think if, if Director Safcheck is agreeable, if we, if we could look at a cap for a four- to six-year term, that the, the state would understand would be our exposure, that would be agreeable to us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Representative Chau.
I guess this is for, yeah, just a clarifying question for their DOT or the City and County, but do you know if there are any other state departments that would fit under this definition, or is it just DOT?
Then I'm not sure. Maybe, Don, again.
So we are also looking at other ways for, like, so DOE, they have a lot of impervious surfaces, so they would have a lot of credits to theirs that would, you know, minimize the cost that they would have to incur. We, you know, so any kind of travelway or public access facility, that would be exempted. So there are definitely, I mean, we haven't sat down with all the different departments yet for the state, but we were looking to do that if we could. We were just concerned that this bill would be a blanket exemption for, for all state entities, which is not where we want to go, right? We want to have that opportunity to negotiate and show and demonstrate that there are opportunities for discounts, or rebates, or credits, or exemptions for all the different state departments, so that all, everyone should fairly pay into this stormwater utility.
I, I kind of was just specifically asking about this bill, though, the definition in this bill, where the department would have to have manage a stormwater management system that connects with the county? And if there's any other departments that have that?
I don't believe there's any other departments that have that.
That's, that's all. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Sorry about that. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Um, sorry. Any further questions? Seeing none, okay, we're going to move on to the next bill. House Bill 755-HD1 relating to Aquatic Nuisance Species. First up is DLNR.
Aloha, Laura Kaakua for DLNR. The department supports this measure, and we stand on our testimony. I did want to highlight a couple points here. The first is the very real threat of nuisance species, stony coral tissue loss disease that has not affected our waters yet, but has absolutely devastated other islands, and so that's an example of one of the aquatic nuisance species that we are trying to protect against by asking for greater authority to regulate and protect our ocean resources. And I also wanted to highlight the time sensitivity. We're really hoping that this measure can pass this year, because we need to adopt regulations that mirror the Federal Vessel Incident Discharge Act prior to 2025, when that act takes place, or else we would be preempted from enforcing similar provisions of that act. So the federal law will, once it is enacted, and we don't have a, a similar state law, it will just be the federal government to regulate. So we really want to be able to regulate ourselves, and are hoping that this can move forward this year. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Next up is UH PCSU Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, member of the committee. I'm Kristy Martin with the Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species, or Sea Gaps. The reason for this bill is to add authorities to the Division of Aquatic Resources. Our understanding of invasive species has really evolved over time. We used to think that the primary pathway was ballast water for bringing in new invasive species into our marine environment. Turns out hull fouling is actually the top vector. That's how things get here. That is all of the growth on the outside of the vessel, and now we learn that there's other ways, again, related to vessels, that things can come in. There are internal niched areas in a vessel, called a sea chest for one, seawater piping another, and all of these are categorized as, quote, incidental discharges. So when a vessel comes to Hawaii, these discharges can escape into our water, and of course, that's one way that invasive species can move here. So this bill would give additional authorities to the Division of Aquatic Resources over those other incidental discharges. Right now, they are able to regulate ballast water and biofouling, but not the internal seawater piping discharges, not sediments that are associated with, with these vessel movements. And as to what Deputy Kahakuu was talking about, there is a disease called stony coral tissue loss disease that is present in Florida and the Caribbean Islands. In 2022, there was research, a number of pieces of research that showed that this disease can travel with vessels. It can travel in ballast water, it survives ballast water treatment, it can travel in a vessel biofouling, and even the slime layer on vessels. It travels in the sediment. And so, of course, it can be carried by some of these other incidental discharge streams that the department doesn't have the authority to regulate. So we are asking for, for your support for this bill, for that, as well as for when this federal legislation called VITA or VIDA, as the Coast Guard likes to say, when that will take over our, it will preempt our state regulations, but we will be allowed to regulate or co-regulate along with the Coast Guard. And our position is that unless the department has all of the authorities necessary, we will have to just leave it to the Coast Guard to act in Hawaii's best interest. We think the Division of Aquatic Resources can provide the essential knowledge, the biological knowledge, and the tools necessary to provide, to protect our state from invasive species. The Coast Guard is absolutely the best at ballast water equipment, at number of PFDs, at, at all of these other areas, but they need our department for some of those very specialized areas related to our, our aquatic resources. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, questions, members? Representative Ward.
Chair, is Mattson here or on the line? They, they have pretty strong testimony. Not, not there. The, the person who just testified, may I ask you a couple of questions? I like the idea that you're proactive, you're getting against the, getting a leg up on the invasive species, rather than they come here and we got a crisis like the Red Ants and all the other stuff that we've had in the past. My question is, the Federal Vessel Incidental Discharge Act of 2018, are you saying that's not sufficient, and you've got to go above and beyond, which the feds are doing?
The Vessel Incidental Discharge Act was passed into law. It's going to set new standards for how these incidental discharges are, are regulated. So those have not been developed yet, so we don't know what the federal standards are going to be. We don't know how the Coast Guard is then going to be able to regulate it. Until those are fully enacted, and the timeline has been pushed back a bit, so 2025 is their estimated timeline, we don't know what their standards are. But what this bill would do, you will see a mirroring clause in this bill language that would automatically update our state's regulations to match the federal regulations when those are enacted. Otherwise, we're going to be coming back to you in 2025 and hoping that we can pass something so that ours match the feds. And then there's another thing about VITA, is that air- then there's another thing about VITA is that every five years, the EPA and the Coast Guard can set new standards and regulation. And so every five years, we're going to be behind in matching our standards.
So this is a placeholder then until the feds do what they're doing, which then will override whatever is in this one or whatever they want?
It's a two birds. It's both allows us to do that, but it also allows us to act now against stony coral tissue loss disease.
You said the puka in what's going on now is the internal piping, something, there's no pipe cleaning, something, something. Are they coming into the harbor and belching this stuff out or what's going on?
The vessels that typically use Honolulu Harbor and Mattson being one of the companies, those are typically very clean. However, there are some vessels that do have to discharge ballast water. Sometimes those are treated to the level that we would prefer. Sometimes, I'm not too sure. Our position is that we need the authority to make sure that everybody is on the same playing field, that everybody adheres to our water protection standards.
How will you monitor that they adhere to it?
Well, one way that they do it currently is through ballast water checking. All of the vessels have to provide a ballast water report. There's a lot of work that's being done by agencies as well as by companies like Mattson and others to have the equipment onboard that's necessary.
You're checking the ballast, whether it's full or empty, or you're checking the contents of it to see what they spewed out?
We're checking to see whether it was treated or not, and whether it was treated by an acceptable measure. For stony coral tissue loss, what we're requesting is that they discharge no ballast water in Hawaii because we found that it's not, treatment is not effective for killing that pathogen. So for lots of reasons, Hawaii needs those authorities to regulate. Sorry, I might be missing your question.
Well, having been in the merchant marine, I know when we empty the ballast and there's that stuff in, you could always fill the ballasts with water to dilute whatever pathogens that you're speaking of. Do any of them in the harbor actually let this stuff out?
Yes.
They do in the harbor?
Yes.
So why isn't there not a regulation? You've got to be three miles out before you do your ballot cleaning. Why is that not a regulation?
For, thank heavens Hawaii is, and I hate to say this, God, I can't believe I'm saying this, but Hawaii is an importing state, so we bring a lot of our stuff in. There's not a lot of ballast water that needs to go out in our harbor, but when they do offload these vessels, they have to do a little bit of balancing. And so that's why they may offload or even take up some ballast water. It's, so there is some residual risk. The ballast water treatment, you're right, exchange and flushing the tank gets some of it out. But the Naval Research Lab did the research on whether or not this UV treatment, which is honestly how we're dealing with COVID, right? We're UV treating a lot of things. UV treatment is what they use for ballast water treatment equipment right now. It's only 50% effective at killing the stony coral tissue loss pathogen.
Okay, you're getting really into the.
I know, I'm scienceing out on you. I'm sorry.
Into the ballast thing. I wish Mattson was here, though. That would be ideal. Thank you, and thank you, Chair.
Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, members, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 1079 relating to water pollution control. First up is Department of Health, Environmental Health Administration.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee members. My name is Darryl Lum. I'm with the Department of Health Clean Water Branch. The department strongly supports this measure and we stand on our written testimony, and I'll be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify? Members' questions? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 153 HD1 relating to the state of water code penalties. DLNR.
Hello, members. Department strongly supports this measure and stands on its written testimony. Here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Members' questions? I'm sorry, is there anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, members' questions? Okay, next up is House Bill 905 HD1 relating to sustainable groundwater yields. First up is DLNR.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee members. The department stands in support of this measure on its written testimony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Members' questions? Okay, none. We're going to move on to House Bill 88 HD1 relating to coastal erosion. First up is DLNR.
Good morning, Chair, Committee members. Michael Kane on behalf of DLNR, and we stand on our testimony in support of this measure.
Thank you. Next is the Attorney General, Honzu.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Deputy Attorney General, Kenny Spart. We just want to point out that in order to avoid conflict with the Constitution, we recommend adding a statement identifying the bill as a matter of statewide concern. And I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. University of Hawaii? Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, members' question? Okay, we're going to move on to the next one, House Bill 756 HD2 relating to land use. First up is DLNR.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good morning, I think still. Michael Kane on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. We stand on our testimony in support of this measure.
Okay, thank you. Next is Office of Planning and Sustainable Development.
Aloha, Chair, Aloha Committee, Scott Glenn, Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. We stand on our testimony in support and available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, questions? Representative Ward.
DLNR, please. I don't usually use the word social or economic equity, but in this case, if you're a millionaire and you live on the ocean, you're going to get a relocation allowance and a designated place to stay, how do we, as representatives of the people of Hawaii, justify 28,000 people on the Hawaiian homes list and the Hawaiians who are homeless living on the beach not having relocation allowances like this one would for people who drive Teslas and are rather well off?
Thank you. I'm glad you asked that. We do need to stress that this is not a buyout bill where we're proposing to go in and purchase these high-end properties. What we're finding is that we have a lot of tools that we know work or don't work for dealing with coastal erosion. We don't have tools for managed retreat or for relocation, and we need to develop those. So the purpose of this is to, like, when we go out for public hearings on, let's say, beach nourishment or protective growing, what we hear from the community is over and over is you need to retreat. But right now, that's just a word. We don't know how to do that, so we need to start studying how to do that. So this is to develop, to develop those tools, to learn what we mean when we say retreat in this state.
So what is the Sea Level Relocation Special Fund for?
The first thing we would do would be to take a deep dive into ways that we can assist landowners in retreating or in restoring those lands that have been vacated. So it's the name of the fund. The original idea.
So it's beachfront guidance again, right?
So this would actually fall under the Climate Impact Fund, the governor's proposal. So this would be a subset of that proposal. The genesis of the project was, originally we had talked about doing a pilot program on the north shore of Oahu. The more we examined that, the more we realized there would be issues with that regarding social equity. Originally, we had talked about asking for a direct appropriation. When the governor announced the Climate Impact Fund, we were advised to rework the bill to fall under that, under the Climate Commission. So we would be looking at taking a deep dive into transfer of development rights into potentially low-interest loans. Basically, we need to take the work that the Office of Planning and Sustainability Development has been doing and their recommendations and find out how to implement them. And right now, we don't know how, but nobody else in the United States has figured it out either. So we're going to need to start moving forward and seeing what we need when we use these words, retreat or managed retreat.
You know, state lands involved as to where relocation can take place. I know that the bill does mention exposure involving state lands, but also relocation, is that including state lands?
At this point, from my perspective, everything is on the table. We need to study everything. We need to take a deep dive into all of our options. Do you know that state land on Oahu has already been thoroughly studied and lands have already been turned over to the Housing Development Corporation? So our suspicion is there might not be many state lands. But at this point, I want everything to be on the table. I want to study everything.
But the way I read the bill, it's basically, we're going to give you a new place to live. Particularly on page four, it says, "Transfer of Development Rights Means Programs Allowing Property Owners to Transfer Development Rights from Property in Areas Where Development is No Longer Desirable or Sustainable to Desirable or Sustainable Development Areas." That's pretty much a real estate relocation effort to a particular set of special individuals. Anyway, the point is, I hope it's just a study, but if it involves land, again, the equity issue where there are Alice families that represent 50% of the people of Hawaii and they're basically having a roof over their head that they can afford if they have it. And this is a relocation for those who clearly can't afford it, and we're kind of going over backwards. As I said, I don't usually talk about social equity, but this is really a big one with an exclamation point.
I, thank you. For what it's worth, I do share those concerns, as do those in our department. So that, that will always be one of the questions we look at. And that is one of the ways, one of the primary reasons we backed away from proposing a pilot program that focused specifically on Palma Lu on the north shore of Oahu. So we share the same concerns, and there are questions we need to continually ask.
I appreciate that last statement. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay. Hold on, Representative Koriashi followed by Cochran.
I'm concerned about the word voluntary. It seems that that might limit what you can do. You have voluntary in the proposed title of the subsection, and then voluntary in the general powers section on page five.
I am not committed to keeping the word voluntary in the bill.
Maybe as discussion moves forward, you think about whether you need that or want that, or, thank you.
Thank you. And we will, because I think that's a good point.
Representative Cochran.
Thank you. And I know I share the same concerns as what Rep Ward had brought up. And my other thought process was the tax, loss of taxation. So, you know, the land and revenue in the SMA areas and what have you on the county level, real property tax being gotten from these houses on the shore, you remove them, you know, what's that, what's the repercussions of that lack of revenue now on a real property tax basis? Have you kind of looked into that, what that would sum up to at all?
No, because this is our initial step at examining all the questions. One of the benefits of housing this under the Climate Commission is that we will have representatives from Office of Planning from various county agencies and state agencies. On behalf of the DLNR, our cool honor is to protect the public resources, and then others will come to the table and talk about economic interests or property interests. But I need to take the perspective of how do I protect our shorelines?
Chair, let me follow up quickly. And so that's where I think I brought it up in our last discussion on this item about restoration, preservation in place, to look at that rather than just abandon, retreat is the only answer and toolbox in our toolkit, you know, to suss out the different shorelines where feasible and practicable to preserve in place, such as the Sugar Cove in Paia example and others, you know, Iroquois Point, what have you.
And I absolutely agree. And our department is currently investing in some significant projects to do beach restoration, and we're heavily involved in consulting on Sugar Cove for the committee. That was a small-scale beach restoration in the north area of Maui. So what I would tell you today is, we have a good understanding of how to do beach nourishment. We know the risks, we know the benefits. It's retreat that we don't understand. So we're not taking shoreline restoration off the table. It's, we have this tool, this word that everyone uses, and we need to know what that means.
All right, very good. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? I have a quick question. So, you know, when you looked in, looking into deep dives, have you looked at historically what the state has done? Meaning, the 1960 tidal wave that hit Hawaii and then Hilo, they, in Waikia, they moved people out of the area. How was that paid for? And how was that done? Who paid for it?
Excellent question, and I would like to research it more, because Hilo after the tsunami was a good example. I know the counties, especially Kauai, have been working with the transfer of development rights, and that's been proving to be more complicated than we thought it would be. So we'll be taking a deep dive into a lot of the questions.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 993 HD1 relating to Sea Level Rise Adaptation. Let's see, first up is DEBET.
Aloha, Lacey Goshi with the DEBET Director's Office. We stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Office of Planning and Sustainable Development.
Aloha, Chair, Aloha Committee. This is Scott Glenn, Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. This bill is an admin bill. We very much appreciate the Finance Committee scheduling it and offering the hearing. We have our testimony in support, and I just wanted to underscore that this is, in our mind, a phase two to Act 178, which was passed last year. And from that work, we identified the vulnerable state facilities that are in the Sea Level Rise area. And this next step would then be to actually put in place the process for agencies to work together and use a consistent method to identify, what do we do with these critically vulnerable facilities, so that we can look at adaptation, hardening, relocation, or if it's a leased facility, for example, maybe ending that lease and relocating the operation somewhere else. But right now, without something like this, as agencies grapple with their individual facilities being at risk, they're going to make individual decisions and not necessarily look at the statewide global perspective of the state's interest and a method that is defensible and accountable to you all as the legislature as well. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is DLNR.
Good morning, Michael Kane on behalf of DLNR. We stand on our testimony in support and look forward to working closely with OPSD in realizing the intent of the bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Members' questions? Representative Cochran.
Chair, for Mr. Glenn. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi. So part two of this, I guess, so I, what, one state facility that came to mind is Kamia Mea Third School in Lahaina, right off the shoreline there. Is this on your list of places to look at and, you know, to address the Sea Level Rise?
Would you mind if I called up our coastal zone management program manager?
Whoever could help assist more insight to that.
So this is Justine Nihipali, and Justine actually led the project and is most familiar with the detailed findings of it.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Representative Cochran and Chair, Vice Chair.
Representative Cochran and Chair, Vice Chair and Committees. So we have a report to the legislature that was submitted in December, but very quick kind of notes relating to Department of Education. Some of the observations and key takeaways from the report, sorry, I'm reviewing my notes, is Oahu has the highest number of vulnerable state facilities. Department of Education, so the school that you're talking about, is likely to have, is likely on that list and has the highest number of vulnerable state facilities in each sea level rise scenario. Right now, we do have a graduate intern actually helping us to develop specific, building footprints to make our data more accurate, to better understand the impacts. But I don't have the specific list with me, but it is in the report, which we can send to your office.
Yeah. And maybe to the committee to, for others?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone more, any more questions on the members? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to House Bill 952 HD1 relating to natural resources. First, DLNR.
Aloha, Laura Kaakua for DLNR. The department strongly supports this measure. We stand on our testimony and are available if you have any questions. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Next is Kares on Zoom. Okay. Okay, we'll move on. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, questions, members? Representative Kobayashi.
For DLNR, I'd just like to point out that this is a stealth bill that essentially seems to be split into two parts. The first part talks about climate change in every section up through the appropriation section on the last page. And then the appropriation section says zero about climate change. It essentially says that you can use the money for virtually everything that DLNR does.
Yes, so we...
Was that the intent?
No, so there is no intent to make it a stealth appropriation.
It is.
Well, I can, I can share. I think, you know, we think about climate change as something that's separate, but really, this, all of the work that we do to remove invasive species, to restore our native forests, to improve our watershed, to restore the coastline or care for our aquatic environment, it's all to make Hawaii more resilient in the face of a warming climate where we have more frequent storms. And we need this green infrastructure from Mauna to Makai to really keep our entire community safe. So, yeah.
But the point here is that this is a stealth bill. It says you can use the money to protect, manage, and restore natural resources, et cetera, et cetera, without mentioning climate change.
I think, to us, it's absolutely one and the same in that our work to steward and protect natural resources directly, it not only addresses climate, but it can actually, the work to restore our ecosystems can actually improve microclimates and together improve the climate for Hawaii. And so we see it as, it's been a constant need that we need to care for our natural resources to just sustain life in these islands, but with the warming climate, that we have an urgency around this work. So we do see it as one and the same.
I don't.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, members, we're going to recess for decision-making. We're going to take, we're going to come back at about 12 o'clock and then move, we're going to vote and then move into the next agenda. We're in recess.
Okay, we're going to reconvene the committee on finance for our first agenda, 10:00 AM, Okay, we're going to reconvene the committee on finance for our first agenda, 10:00 AM, Okay, we're going to reconvene the committee on finance for our first agenda, 10:00 AM, for decision-making on the following bills. First up is House Bill 361-HD1. Our recommendation for decision-making on the following bills. First up is House Bill 361-HD1. Our recommendation for decision-making on the following bills. First up is House Bill 361-HD1. Our recommendation is we pass as-is. Any discussion? Vice Chair. is we pass as-is. Any discussion? Vice Chair. is we pass as-is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 361-HD1 as-is. Chair and vice-chair vote, Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 361-HD1 as-is. Chair and vice-chair vote, Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 361-HD1 as-is. Chair and vice-chair vote, aye, Representative IU. aye, Representative IU. aye, Representative IU.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Representative Chun. Representative Chun. Representative Chun.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Representative Cochran. Representative Cochran. Representative Cochran.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Representative Garrett. Representative Garrett. Representative Garrett.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Representative Kahaloa. Representative Kahaloa. Representative Kahaloa.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Representative Kila is excused. Representative Kobayashi. Representative Kila is excused. Representative Kobayashi. Representative Kila is excused. Representative Kobayashi.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Representative Lamosau. Representative Lamosau. Representative Lamosau.
Aye.
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 Representative Morikawa. Representative Morikawa. Representative Morikawa.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Representative Nishimoto. Representative Nishimoto. Representative Nishimoto.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Representative Poi Poi. Representative Poi Poi. Representative Poi Poi.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Representative Taki Nouchi. Representative Taki Nouchi. Representative Taki Nouchi.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Representative Alcos. Representative Alcos. Representative Alcos.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Representative Ward. Representative Ward. Representative Ward.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. House Bill 203-HD1 as-is, discussion? Okay, thank you very much. House Bill 203-HD1 as-is, discussion? Okay, thank you very much. House Bill 203-HD1 as-is, discussion? Yep, Mr. Garrett. Yep, Mr. Garrett. Yep, Mr. Garrett.
Sorry, Chair, I'll be voting with reservations on this bill. Sorry, Chair, I'll be voting with reservations on this bill. Sorry, Chair, I'll be voting with reservations on this bill.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Same request, please, Chair. Same request, please, Chair. Same request, please, Chair.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
Same request. Same request. Same request.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Okay, Vice Chair. Okay, thank you. Any others? Okay, Vice Chair. Okay, thank you. Any others? Okay, Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 203-HD1 as-is, noting the excuse absence Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 203-HD1 as-is, noting the excuse absence Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 203-HD1 as-is, noting the excuse absence of Representative Kila who will be noted excused for the rest of this agenda. I have of Representative Kila who will be noted excused for the rest of this agenda. I have of Representative Kila who will be noted excused for the rest of this agenda. I have reservations for Representative IU and Garrett. Are there any additional reservations? Are reservations for Representatives IU and Garrett. Are there any additional reservations? reservations for Representative IU and Garrett. Are there any additional reservations? Are there any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Are there any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. there any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to House Bill 202-HD2 as-is, discussion. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to House Bill 202-HD2 as-is, discussion. Vice Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to House Bill 202-HD2 as-is, discussion. Vice Vice Chair. Chair. Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 202-HD2 as-is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 202-HD2 as-is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 202-HD2 as-is. Are there any reservations? Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 1183-HD1 as-is, discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, thank you. House Bill 1183-HD1 as-is, discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, thank you. House Bill 1183-HD1 as-is, discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1183-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1183-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1183-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. House Bill 1267-HD1 as-is, discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, thank you very much. House Bill 1267-HD1 as-is, discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, thank you very much. House Bill 1267-HD1 as-is, discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1267-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1267-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1267-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 1405-HD1 as-is, discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, thank you. House Bill 1405-HD1 as-is, discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, thank you. House Bill 1405-HD1 as-is, discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1405-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1405-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1405-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 953-HD1. Members, we're going to move this to end of calendar tomorrow Okay, House Bill 953-HD1. Members, we're going to move this to end of calendar tomorrow Okay, House Bill 953-HD1. Members, we're going to move this to end of calendar tomorrow on our 3:30 agenda. So that's 3:123 tomorrow, 3:30 agenda for decision-making on this bill. on our 3:30 agenda. So that's 3:123 tomorrow, 3:30 agenda for decision-making on this bill. on our 3:30 agenda. So that's 3:123 tomorrow, 3:30 agenda for decision-making on this bill. Okay, yeah, the subject matter is going to be working on this. Next up is House Bill Okay, yeah, the subject matter is going to be working on this. Next up is House Bill Okay, yeah, the subject matter is going to be working on this. Next up is House Bill 1090-HD1 as-is. Any discussion? Vice Chair. 1090-HD1 as-is. Any discussion? Vice Chair. 1090-HD1 as-is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1090-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1090-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1090-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations?
Chair, reservations. Chair, reservations. Chair, reservations.
Reservations. Any additional reservations? Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is Reservations. Any additional reservations? Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is Reservations. Any additional reservations? Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. adopted. adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 1089-HD1 as-is, discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, thank you. House Bill 1089-HD1 as-is, discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, thank you. House Bill 1089-HD1 as-is, discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1089-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1089-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1089-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations?
Chair, W.R. Chair, W.R. Chair, W.R.
Reservations for Cochran, reservations for Kahaloa. Are there any additional reservations? Reservations for Cochran, reservations for Kahaloa. Are there any additional reservations? Reservations for Cochran, reservations for Kahaloa. Are there any additional reservations? Reservations for Poi Poi. Any additional? Are there any no's? Chair, your recommendation Reservations for Poi Poi. Any additional? Are there any no's? Chair, your recommendation Reservations for Poi Poi. Any additional? Are there any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. is adopted. is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 892-HD1. We're going to be moving this out as an HD2, changing Okay, House Bill 892-HD1. We're going to be moving this out as an HD2, changing Okay, House Bill 892-HD1. We're going to be moving this out as an HD2, changing the FTE to Special Fund and Tech. Any discussion? Vice Chair. the, the FTE to Special Fund and Tech. Any discussion? Vice Chair. the, the FTE to Special Fund and Tech. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 892-HD1 with amendments. Are there any Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 892-HD1 with amendments. Are there any Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 892-HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any no's? Chair, you recommend-- oh, no for you? reservations? Any no's? Chair, you recommend-- oh, no for you? reservations? Any no's? Chair, you recommend-- oh, no for you?
No. No. No.
No for-- No for-- No for--
I'm sorry. Other bill. I'm good. I'm sorry. Other bill. I'm good. I'm sorry. Other bill. I'm good.
Oh, okay, you're good. Okay, so no reservations, no no's. Okay, Chair, your Oh, okay, you're good. Okay, so no reservations, no no's. Okay, Chair, your Oh, okay, you're good. Okay, so no reservations, no no's. Okay, Chair, your recommendation is adopted. recommendation is adopted. recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on to House Bill 1511-HD1 as-is. Any discussion? Okay, moving on to House Bill 1511-HD1 as-is. Any discussion? Okay, moving on to House Bill 1511-HD1 as-is. Any discussion?
Reservations. Reservations. Reservations.
Reservations, okay. Reservations, okay. Reservations, okay.
Thank you. Representative. Thank you. Representative. Thank you. Representative.
Chair, I appreciate some of your questions that you also asked on this measure. I, I Chair, I appreciate some of your questions that you also asked on this measure. I, I Chair, I appreciate some of your questions that you also asked on this measure. I think think accountability is important. I definitely want to give resources to Board of Water think accountability is important. I definitely want to give resources to Board of Water accountability is important. I definitely want to give resources to Board of Water Supply so that repairs aren't paying more money for these exploratory wells, but we Supply so that repairs aren't paying more money for these exploratory wells, but we Supply so that repairs aren't paying more money for these exploratory wells, but we got to go, we got to make sure that the Navy is accountable here and get the money back got to go, we got to make sure that the Navy is accountable here and get the money back got to go, we got to make sure that the Navy is accountable here and get the money back or, you know, get refunded if the Board of Water Supply is refunded. So I'm just with or, you know, get refunded if the Board of Water Supply has refunded. So I'm just with or, you know, get refunded if the Board of Water Supply is refunded. So I'm just with reservations for now. reservations for now. reservations for now.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, we, I totally agree, and we will be dealing with that as we go through the Yeah, we, I totally agree, and we will be dealing with that as we go through the Yeah, we, I totally agree, and we will be dealing with that as we go through the process. Okay, Representative Ward. process. Okay, Representative Ward. process. Okay, Representative Ward.
The next bill, sir. The next bill, sir. The next bill, sir.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, Vice Chair. Any further discussion? Okay, Vice Chair. Any further discussion? Okay, Vice Chair.
Okay, recommendation of the chair is for HB 1511-HD1 is to pass as-is, noting Okay, recommendation of the chair is for HB 1511-HD1 is to pass as-is, noting Okay, recommendation of the chair is for HB 1511-HD1 is to pass as-is, noting the reservations of Representatives IU and Alcos. Are there additional reservations? the reservations of Representatives IU and Alcos. Are there additional reservations? the reservations of Representatives IU and Alcos. Are there additional reservations? Are there any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Are there any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Are there any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1101-HD1 as-is, discussion. Representative Ward. Okay, House Bill 1101-HD1 as-is, discussion. Representative Ward. Okay, House Bill 1101-HD1 as-is, discussion. Representative Ward.
Chair, I'll be voting no on this. This is a new tax. At the same time, we've promised Chair, I'll be voting no on this. This is a new tax. At the same time, we've promised Chair, I'll be voting no on this. This is a new tax. At the same time, we've promised that we were going to lower the cost of living. This adds to it. And everybody has a driveway, that we were going to lower the cost of living. This adds to it. And everybody has a driveway, that we were going to lower the cost of living. This adds to it. And everybody has a driveway, everybody has a roof, and that's going to be a percentage of tax that will go to the everybody has a roof, and that's going to be a percentage of tax that will go to the everybody has a roof, and that's going to be a percentage of tax that will go to the counties. And I know Mr. Sniffin said, hey, the DOT and all of its roads should be exempt. counties. And I know Mr. Sniffin said, hey, the DOT and all of its roads should be exempt. counties. And I know Mr. Sniffin said, hey, the DOT and all of its roads should be exempt. Well, I think all the people, at least in our district, should be exempt from this Well, I think all the people, at least in our district, should be exempt from this Well, I think all the people, at least in our district, should be exempt from this same tax, which the counties seem to think of all kinds of ways of getting more money. same tax, which the counties seem to think of all kinds of ways of getting more money. same tax, which the counties seem to think of all kinds of ways of getting more money. So I have a very firm no on this. Thank you. So I have a very firm no on this. Thank you. So I have a very firm no on this. Thank you.
You know, I have always believed that these types of things should be dealt with, You know, I have always believed that these types of things should be dealt with, You know, I have always believed that these types of things should be dealt with, not with fees, but with property tax, because at some point in time, the federal government not with fees, but with property tax, because at some point in time, the federal government not with fees, but with property tax, because at some point in time, the federal government will change, because they're looking at it right now, changing their salt tax, which will change, because they're looking at it right now, changing their salt tax, which will change, because they're looking at it right now, changing their salt tax, which is their state and local taxes, to be deductible. And when they do that, it makes more sense is their state and local taxes, to be deductible. And when they do that, it makes more sense is their state and local taxes, to be deductible. And when they do that, it makes more sense to put it on property tax where it's deductible instead of a fee, which is not. But we'll to put it on property tax where it's deductible instead of a fee, which is not. But we'll to put it on property tax where it's deductible instead of a fee, which is not. But we'll keep this measure moving for discussion. Any further discussion? keep this measure moving for discussion. Any further discussion? keep this measure moving for discussion. Any further discussion?
Chair, I'm going to vote. Chair, I'm going to vote. Chair, I'm going to vote.
Yes. I'm sorry? Yes. I'm sorry? Yes. I'm sorry?
I'm a no vote. I'm a no vote. I'm a no vote.
Okay, so noted. Representative Cochran. Okay, so noted. Representative Cochran. Okay, so noted. Representative Cochran.
Sure, yeah, myself also. Sure, yeah, myself also. Sure, yeah, myself also.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay, thank you very much, as-is. Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay, thank you very much, as-is. Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay, thank you very much, as-is.
Okay, recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1101-HD1 as-is. Are there any Okay, recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1101-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Okay, recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1101-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Noting the no votes of Representatives Cochran, Alcos, and Ward, are there any additional reservations? Noting the no votes of Representatives Cochran, Alcos, and Ward, are there any additional Noting the no votes of Representatives Cochran, Alcos, and Ward, are there any additional no votes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. no votes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. no votes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on to House Bill 755-HD1 as-is, discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, moving on to House Bill 755-HD1 as-is, discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, moving on to House Bill 755-HD1 as-is, discussion. Vice Chair.
Oh. Oh. Oh.
Representative Garrett. Representative Garrett. Representative Garrett.
Sorry, just with, excuse me, with reservations, please. Sorry, just with, excuse me, with reservations, please. Sorry, just with, excuse me, with reservations, please.
Thank you. Any others, Representative? Thank you. Any others, Representative? Thank you. Any others, Representative?
With reservations. With reservations. With reservations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. With reservations, okay.
Representative Ward. Representative Ward. Representative Ward.
Same request. Same request. Same request.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Okay, Vice Chair for vote. Okay, thank you. Any others? Okay, Vice Chair for vote.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 755-HD1 as-is, noting the reservations Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 755-HD1 as-is, noting the reservations of Representatives Garrett, Alcos, and Ward. Are there additional reservations? Representative of Representatives Garrett, Alcos, and Ward. Are there additional reservations? Representative Lamosau reservations, and Representative IU reservations. Any additional? Are there Lamosau reservations, and Representative IU reservations. Any additional? Are there any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to be moving on to House Bill 1079-HD1. We're Okay, thank you very much. We're going to be moving on to House Bill 1079-HD1. We're going to be moving this out as an HD2, blanking out the penalty and the increase in the penalty going to be moving this out as an HD2, blanking out the penalty and the increase in the penalty and the, and tech. Any discussion? Vice Chair. and the, and tech. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1079-HD1 with amendments. Are there Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1079-HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. any reservations? Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on to House Bill 153-HD1. We're going to be moving this out as-is, Okay, moving on to House Bill 153-HD1. We're going to be moving this out as-is, members. This one also has a, has a penalty increase, but this, this one did go through members. This one also has a, has a penalty increase, but this, this one did go through to the Sherry, which has oversight over that. The previous bill did not. That's why I blanked to the Sherry, which has oversight over that. The previous bill did not. That's why I blanked it out. Okay, any discussion? Vice Chair. it out. Okay, any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 153-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 153-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to House Bill 905-HD1 as-is, any discussion? Vice Chair. Okay, thank you. Moving on to House Bill 905-HD1 as-is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 905-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 905-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Reservations from Representatives Alcos? Reservations from Representative Alcos?
Yep, W.R. Yep, W.R.
Any additional reservations? Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any additional reservations? Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 88-HD1 as-is, any discussion? Vice Chair. Okay, thank you. House Bill 88-HD1 as-is, any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 88-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 88-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 756-HD2 as-is, discussion. Representative Ward. Okay, House Bill 756-HD2 as-is, discussion. Representative Ward.
Chair, I'm going to vote no on this because, number one, it's a beachfront bailout. If Chair, I'm going to vote no on this because, number one, it's a beachfront bailout. If you are fortunate enough to live on the ocean, you get a relocation due to sea weather, the you are fortunate enough to live on the ocean, you get a relocation due to sea weather, the sea level rise. And secondly, it's a poke in the face, in the eyes, and the ears of sea level rise. And secondly, it's a poke in the face, in the eyes, and the ears of those who are homeless on the beach, i.e. the Hawaiians who are not given land and relocation those who are homeless on the beach, i.e. the Hawaiians who are not given land and relocation funds, as this bill indicates. Clearly, it's an unfair bill, and I think it's premature funds, as this bill indicates. Clearly, it's an unfair bill, and I think it's premature because it's just not fair. Thank you. because it's just not fair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Still a work in progress. Representative Cochran. Okay, thank you. Still a work in progress. Representative Cochran.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'll, I'm willing to move this forward, but I also share concerns Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'll, I'm willing to move this forward, but I also share concerns with the bill. Thank you. with the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, Vice Chair. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, Vice Chair.
Okay, recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 756-HD2 as-is, noting the reservations Okay, recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 756-HD2 as-is, noting the reservations of Representative Cochran. Are there additional reservations? of Representative Cochran. Are there additional reservations?
One, W.R. One, W.R.
Okay, reservations by Representative Alcos. Are there additional reservations? Noting Okay, reservations by Representative Alcos. Are there additional reservations? Noting the no vote by Representative Ward, are there additional no votes? Representative Poi Poi, the no vote by Representative Ward, are there additional no votes? Representative Poi Poi, no vote. Any additional? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. no vote. Any additional? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to be moving on to House Bill 993-HD1 as-is. Okay, thank you very much. We're going to be moving on to House Bill 993-HD1 as-is. Any discussion? Vice Chair. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 993-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 993-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 952-HD1 as-is, discussion. Okay, Vice Chair. Okay, thank you. House Bill 952-HD1 as-is, discussion. Okay, Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 952-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 952-HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. We're adjourned with this one. We'll move on to the next Okay, thank you very much. We're adjourned with this one. We'll move on to the next one in a couple minutes. We're adjourned. one in a couple minutes. We're adjourned. We're adjourned. Okay, the Committee on Finance will come to order. We're going to hear, moving on to our second agenda. First up is House Bill 418 HD1 relating to emergency preparedness. First up is the Attorney General's Office. I guess not here. Okay, next up is Department of Defense.
Aloha, members of the committee. Adam Weintraub.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You know what? I went, I'm reading off the wrong one. Sorry. Okay, first up is Hawaii Emergency Management Agency on this bill.
Aloha, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Adam Weintraub. I'm the Communication Director for the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. We stand on our written testimony, offering comment on this bill, and here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Next up is individual Kylie Swan on Zoom.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. My name is Kylie Swan. I'm an emergency awareness officer for Self-Efficacy Advisory Council with developmental disabilities. I'm strong support of this HB 418 because I live in Ever Beach, and it's so hard to hear what's going with the sirens system. Sometimes it's loud, sometimes it's soft, sometimes I don't hear any whooping tones. Or is it possible you can, you can get it fixed? And, and had little strobe lights on the top of the sirens so, so people with deaf or hearing impaired can know what's going on with the sirens system? And also, please let me know if you have any questions, and I'll be answered to have resident or board. Any question, let me know, so I can, so you can get this down and get this thing fixed. Thank you so much. Let me, let me testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Questions, members? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill. House Bill 1035 HD1 relating to homeland security. First up is the Attorney General.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair. By way of introduction, my name is Trista Spear. I'm a Deputy Attorney General appearing on behalf of Attorney General Lopez here today. We offer the testimony that we submitted in writing to all of you members of the committee on this bill. While we are in support of the general purpose of the bill, we provide the comments as fully articulated in our testimony here today, and we are recommending to reverting back to the original definition of CII that was provided in the initial draft of House Bill 1035, for all of the reasons articulated, and to ensure that the purpose of the bill that you all wrote into it is, is achieved. And I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see. Next up is Department of Defense.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Kevin Bags. I'm the Director of the Hawaii State Fusion Center. We stand in support of this measure, as is originally written. However, it's come to our attention that there was amendments made in House Draft 1 that would impact the original intent to ensure open communication and sharing information between OHS and its critical infrastructures, infrastructure partners. We're open to any questions, but.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up is the Hawaii State Energy Office. On Zoom.
Good afternoon, Chair.
In person, please proceed.
Vice Chair and members of the committee, John Chin from the Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand in our written testimony in support, and would also like to note that we also support the amendments that the other agencies have requested. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hawaii Office of Homeland Security.
Good evening. As I testified earlier, I'm here on behalf of Administrator Frank Pace with the Office of Homeland Security, as well as General Hara. I'm just standing on my earlier comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Office of Information, Information Practices.
Jennifer Brooks for OIP. Will stand on our testimony. We're happy to continue the discussion with the other interested parties, and I'm here for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members question. Representative Ward.
Who is the emergency? Haime is not here.
Department of Defense.
Okay, yeah, is General Hara or his representative?
General Hara.
Yes, could you come forward, please? Does critical infrastructure include HECO and all of the related power grids?
Yeah, that's correct. There's 16 critical infrastructure sectors that are identified, and one of them would be the energy sector.
And is, is there anything you can say publicly about how vulnerable they are? Or have any of them been attacked that we don't know about or that we should know about?
There's been several incidents nationwide, to include here in Hawaii. I wouldn't want to go into too much detail, but some have been reported in the media that there have been incursions toward our energy sector, most notably the one in North Carolina, where a sector was, was damaged as a result of gunfire and caused a significant power outage.
Does any of this entail future missile crises? Any systems that are in this bill related to that?
Again, the defense is part of the critical infrastructure, so that would encompass all of that, yes.
Because in this committee, we heard from Haime that they are no longer letting the public know by sirens, but there will be text messages. Is that part of this bill or any of the kuliana in this bill?
Sir, I would not know. I'm not familiar with what you're discussing.
It's still a puka. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, we're going to move on to House Bill 1036 HD1 relating to homeland security. First up is Department of Defense.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. My name's Kevin Bags. I'm Director of the Homeland, I'm Director of the Hawaii State Fusion Center. I'm testifying on behalf of General Hara and Administrator Frank Pace, and we stand on our submitted written testimony in support of this bill.
Okay. Next is Hawaii Office of Homeland Security. Same thing.
Did that, oh, yes, sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, question, members? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill. House Bill 1037 HD2 relating to statewide interoperable public safety communication. Okay, next, let's see. Okay, Department of Law Enforcement. Maybe not here. Okay, Department of Defense.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Everett Kanishige. I'm the statewide interoperable communications coordinator. I'll stand on, I'll stand on my written testimony in support, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you very much. There's another one from Department of Defense. You're, you're on both of them. Yeah, General Hara. Okay, anybody else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, thank you very much. Members' questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill. House Bill 1371 HD1 relating to San Island State Recreation. First up is DLR.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Laura Kaakua for DLR. The department supports this measure, and we did want to offer a, a simple amendment, which is just to remove or clarify, otherwise clarify, Kehe Lagoon Beach Park is included in the bill, and that's a city and county park. And so, we're assuming that the introducers may want to remove that. Thank you for allowing us the chance to testify.
Thank you. Haime Foundation. Victoria Takamine. Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? A lot of testimony. Okay. No one else? Members' questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill. House Bill 1385 HD2 relating to public lands. First up is DLR.
Aloha, the department respectfully opposes this measure. I do have Luke Jarvis here from our land division, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
So you're, you're here on behalf of Russell Suji also? Russell Suji also?
Yeah, Russell Suji may also be here on Zoom, and so the three of us together can.
Okay. Ms. Suji, would you like to testify? He's not on Zoom? Okay, guess you. Everybody embedded you. Okay. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, members' questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill. House Bill, now, House Bill 908 HD1 relating to Land Conservation Fund. First up is DLR.
Aloha, the department strongly supports this measure. We do offer an amendment to further enhance the state's ability to protect our resources. I did want to note a couple things. The, our revenue available in the Legacy Land Conservation Fund has decreased and, and stayed stagnant. I think that was meant to be a temporary decrease in revenue. 15 million was also taken from the fund during the pandemic, and we understand that. But we're hoping that this is the year that we can increase the revenue to this very important fund. There are very significant places on each of the islands that communities in, in many of your districts are working to protect at this time or have protected. And, and thanks to this fund, the projects that just passed, or just received a recommendation for funding in this past round are Makolelau and Molakai, two projects in Maunawili Oahu, and an important cultural site in Haena Kauai. Last year, there were projects funded from Hannah Maui and Mahu Kona in Kohala on Hawaii Island. And there's simply never enough funds to fully support the, the acquisition and protection of these places that community passionately want to see protected. And so, an increase in the funding for this Legacy Land Conservation Fund will impact every island and community, so we're hoping that that can be restored. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Tax Foundation of Hawaii. On Zoom. Okay, not with us. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, members' questions? Representative Cochran.
For Ms. Cochwa. Aloha, nice to see you here and on Maui this weekend.
Yes.
Thank you for being there. Real quickly, though, this money can be utilized for maintenance and management of said lands once purchased?
Yes, there's a small percentage that is available for maintenance and management. The vast majority of, of the funds go to acquisition for protection because that need is so significant.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, moving on to House Bill 994 HD1 relating to land use. First up is Dibet.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Chris Ariasu, Dibet Director. We stand in support and send our testimony. Available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Office of Planning and Sustainable Development.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Katia Balasciano. I'm with the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. We stand on our testimony and in support of this bill. We're available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Next is Department of Agriculture. Not here. Okay, anyone, wait a minute. Anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, members' questions? Okay, no questions. We're moving on to the next bill. House Bill 562 HD1 relating to permits. First is DLR. Comments?
Aloha, the department stands on our, our testimony, providing comments. We did want to please ask that the amendment added by water and land be retained to preserve our statewide national flood insurance program. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. State Facilities Authority, SFA.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Chad Kiony Ferias, School Facilities Authority, and we stand on our written testimony in support. Available for questions.
Thank you. I think DOE, Facilities Department.
Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. Good afternoon. Kurt Otoguro, Deputy Superintendent, testifying on behalf of Superintendent Hayashi. Department stands on its written testimony. I'd like to modify and add that we support the measure as well as offer comments, and we're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Members' questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to House Bill 15 HD2 relating to real property liens. First is DLR.
Aloha, the department strongly supports this bill, which would aid us in resolving encroaching structures that are largely unpermitted or remain under expired permits beyond their allotted authorization. It strengthens our ability to protect our shorelines. And Michael Kane and I are both available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next is OSTRA, Ostra. Edgar Jones, on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Rep. Ward, and members of the Committee on Finance. Oahu Short Term Rental Alliance, Ostra, is opposed to HB 15 because it lays the groundwork for a county to take a home through non judicial foreclosure for a minor offense. The city and county has already enacted an ordinance, 227, that has provisions for excessive fines. The Department of Planning and Permitting, as a matter of practice, issues notices of order with fines at amounts well above the affordability of homeowners. Here's a common example of this punitive scheme that is already in place. The DPP has not completed the rulemaking process as required. The rules are whatever they come up with in closed meetings. The DPP uses commercial sites scanning software, which is good. But the software scans renting platforms like Airbnb and Verbo for renting advertisements on the island. When a DPP inspector encounters an advertisement, it often contains a 30-day minimum statement as required by the ordinance on the city website. The DPP states they routinely issue notices of violation for advertising. There often isn't enough time given to resolve the NOV. The host is often not familiar with all the compliance criteria. They may have hired a co-host that they have to coordinate with. A listing advertising is not always within the owner's control. The platform, customer service, can bring a listing up without an owner's knowledge as they're trying to help folks and they're not understanding of the, of the compliance for an individual locale. Scammers routinely create listings of these properties. As the notice of order occurs, often the fine is $10,000 or more, well above the affordability for a kapuna. The DPP often does not explain the appeal process and deadlines. They make themselves unavailable, so they do not have to answer questions. HB 15 is discriminatory to our kapuna as it is our agents who are oftenly more often exposed to this trap. I'm not sure why the state is eager to be a defendant in these federal property rights and discrimination lawsuits. It should be rare that a violation reaches the point that someone's home is at risk. Our kapuna deserving of the maximum due process protection from losing their home. I think in addition, not only should they have their day in court, but there should also be a resolution before a county council, before foreclosure can occur. As you know, from my testimony, previous testimony on Bill HB 1486, this is my personal situation. I really want to know why my potential typographical error on a listing would result in my ohanas losing their life savings and home. Please soundly reject this measure. Mahalo for considering these bills.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is John An. On Zoom.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I testify in opposition of HB 15 HD2. It, at the face of it, it appears to be an ability for the government to essentially take away property with minimum due process. The bill makes property ownership and violations of property ownership one of the highest crimes. I believe if someone is, is convicted of drunk driving, I think they have lower fines and penalties than what HB 15 proposes. Battery, there are many criminal crimes that don't have these types of punitive penalties, including losing your, your property within, it seems like 30 to 60 days of a violation. In the United States, I believe property rights is very important, and governments should afford a fair and due process before they place liens and take properties without a judicial procedure. And this bill just almost makes it so that the Department of Planning, Permitting and Planning can make up whatever rule they want since it says in the timeframe that's determined as sufficient by the Department of Planning and Permitting. So it's basically, any rules can be made, and a wide cast of violations can be just thrown out to lots of people. And then if some people don't respond, the government can just take away people's properties. And that just does not sit well at any level. So I plead with you, please not to pass this bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ralph Furley. On Zoom. Not present. Let's see. Cecilia Gomez. Not present. Next, we have Karen Omahoni. Not present. Teresa Harden. Hold on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and Councilmembers for allowing me opportunity to speak today on I oppose Bill HB 15. I'm, I'm a realtor and I want to share a little story with you. I'm sure you can read my testimony that I submitted. Something very alarming happened recently, January 30th, 2023. I was received a phone call by a lessor. It turns out that the D P P had issued a notice of violation on a leasehold property to the lessor, the landowner, not the actual unit owner. And in doing that, I can see real problems if the D P P is weaponized to have additional powers beyond what they should have to therefore go after people. And if they don't properly notify people, this is a problem. On the ad that they had mentioned the violation was the owner's T A number, so they knew the appropriate owner, the T M K number, they knew the correct parcel, and my company and license number, so they knew who the managing person was. There was absolutely no reason for them to go and issue a violation to the lessor and not the rightful property owner or the company managing. They should be issuing it to the proper owner and copying the manager if there's an active, if they say there's an active violation. Now, in that light, on another opportunity, another situation, I have been told that an owner in, in on the park received a notice of violation and was demanded to change to a 30-day minimum type of situation. However, I submitted in testimony the letter from Kathy Suk, the Declaration of Kathy Sukagawa, naming specifically the in on the park as being allowed short-term use. So we have a big problem here with D P P and weaponizing them when they haven't done the work to begin with is a real problem. And I oppose completely against this bill and any revision to it. I have more to say, but I think I'm going to save that for the other bill. So I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, questions? Representative Ward.
Thank you, Chair. Is D P P here or someone from the city and county of Honolulu? No one. Okay, no question, no personal questions. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, questions? Representative Kobayashi.
For DLNR. Would the bill still have any value to DLNR if it were limited to the state of Hawaii and not the counties?
Thank you for the question. Let me ponder it for a second. The, the nexus that DLNR has with the counties is primarily with shoreline violations. And we view this as a, a law that focused on land uses. So the question I would have for the, any lawyers in the room is whether what the testifiers are talking about are land use violations. For us, when we talk about a land use violation, we're talking about unauthorized construction, not rental properties. And the real issue that DLNR faces in working with D P P is many of the people who are, what we allege are conducting shoreline unauthorized work in the shoreline will have hundreds of thousands of dollars in unpaid fines for unauthorized work, also in the setback. So it becomes an awkward situation when we're asked to help protect property that we find wasn't even built with the proper permits. So we want D P P to have the power to enforce on these properties that are building without permits. We're not looking at, whatever I feel about vacation rentals, that's not my kuli'ana, that's not what we're looking at. So Rep. Kobayashi, I, I'm hesitant to say yes because it would help us if D P P had that authority when we see these houses ready to fall in that are still building without permits.
But when the houses are close to the shoreline and fall in, they obviously fall into the high wash of the waves. And wouldn't you then have some authority to take action?
Then we have authority and we're not asking for help in those situations with this bill. What we're concerned about are the houses that are building on the shoreline without permits that will fall in, in the future or...
All right, thank you.
Sorry, and I, I need to be careful about not giving specific examples for pending litigation.
Yes.
But there are a handful.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill. House Bill 538, H D one relating to residential real property. First up is, hold on. Where are we? Richard Fernandez? Not here. Okay, John An.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. I am also testifying in opposition of HB 538. As I had mentioned in my previous testimony for HB 15, this bill makes being a property owner with small violations a higher crime than things like drunk driving, assault and battery, possession of firearms, and the list goes on in terms of the punitive fines that property owners are charged for the violations and then after $5,000 for a lien to be placed on a, on their property. Again, this bill also states that the D P P can determine whether the viol, is free to determine whether violation was satisfied or not. So again, there are no rules initially, and so D P P is capable of creating whatever rule they deem fit. So it just seems like this bill is, again, targeting property owners and it just, it makes property ownership and minor violations of property ownership a crime that is not, and with penalties, that is not in line with, with other crimes that you can, you can compare to. And so I do oppose this bill. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present.
Okay, thank you. Ralph Furley. Not present. Next is Karen Omahoni. Not present. Teresa Harden. Okay, coming back.
Okay, uh, I'm sorry, you got to hold a moment. Hi, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Hi, my name is Teresa Harden and I'm a realtor and I am opposing H, Bill HB 5380. You know, the biggest problem that I have with this is, is weaponization of D P P. And I, we, D P P has proven that they are not trustworthy and there's, there's a lot of problems. So I would be in a lot more support of D P P if they were doing the right thing. And one of my big problems is that the, the D P P is not recognizing. I submitted in, along with my testimony, the paperwork that came from D P P back when Bill 89 was coming about. This was a list from D P P of all of the units in Waikiki, or actually in around the island that were exempt from needing the N U Cs back in the eighties. So these buildings were deemed to be allowed for short-term rental use. D P P will not acknowledge that these properties had prior use and there was not supposed to be a loss of property rights when they rezoned. Those properties that were H1 and H2 were grandfathered in under that original zoning that they had. But what we have with this weaponization of D P P is they are now trying to say that these owners that were allowed use, now that they are changed with Bill 41, which has a whole bunch of problems within itself, now they're no longer allowed and now they're trying to deem them to be illegal operators. And so this is the problem. I have contacted D P P to ask for the list of who were exempt and they say no such list exists. So D P P on one hand is, is, has this attitude and, and situation where they, they will not make determination. On another property, the Hawaii, Waikiki Park Heights, we actually requested determination and they paid the $300 fee. And it came back that D P P said in writing that they could not determine, they could not make that determination. So how are they enforcing now when they can't even determine or make these determinations? So D P P is not to be trusted at all. They are being weaponized along with the tax department and I have a real problem with any trespass on ownership property rights and what the tax department, that's a whole nother situation I will address at another time. But I provided you with my testimony, both the letter from Kathy Sukagawa saying that the in on the park was legally allowed, and now I know that there have been issuing notices of violations to those owners. So not any of my owners, but I have heard another realtor who is a realtor and owns in that building has been issued one. So this is where, this is, this is a big problem where what you are pushing through to try to give them more meat for enforcement is being used. They are already, all right, let's say there's activate, there's investigations and prosecutions going on right now about kickback schemes, about bribery schemes with this tax department. And so I am against any effort to give them any more ammunition, if they have the ability to go in a property without a warrant, is, 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 is outrageous. And back on the other bill, to be able to go after and, and foreclose on a property, you know, quite frankly, I feel it's stealing. It, it's a whole different level. So I apologize, you caught me in the middle of doing business. I've been trying to testify three different testimonies today and I apologize. But I would love to have questions if somebody would like to ask one.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure?
Yes, Chair.
Okay, please proceed.
I'm at Jonesrum, Ostra. Ostra is opposed to Bill 538 because I agree, it does weaponize a county to violate the U.S. Constitution. Our federal constitution clearly prohibits repeated punishments and excessive fines, particularly for a minor offense. To be brief, I will not repeat my testimony on HB 15 and the tsunami of bills that are before this body that deny pop property rights and discriminate against our kapuna homeowners. It is understandable that a zoning ordinance should, you know, have enough deterrent to correct most belligerent offenders. But this is not the case. Instead, what these bills do, including 538, is cast a wide net in snaring those who have done minor infractions. I, I hope this committee takes notice that D P P was not willing to attend this hearing today. Limiting, limiting just to construction violations, please consider that would be gut and replace of this bill. You should just start over the next, next session. Mahalo for considering these bills. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, questions, members? Okay, no questions. We're going to move on to the next bill. House Bill 37 relating to non-general funds. First up is Tax Foundation. Not present. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, there's no one to question, so we're going to move on to the next bill. Let's see, House Bill 1508, H D one relating to Native Hawaiian Affairs. Okay, first up is DBEDs.
Stand in our testimony, sir.
Okay, thank you. CAPA, Chamber of Commerce.
Hello, Chair. Eliza Talbot on behalf of Kiran Polk for the CAPA Chamber of Commerce. Our purview is actually the entire West Oahu region, and so we're very supportive of this legislation as our region has the highest percentage of Native Hawaiian residents. And so we are very supportive of this and I'm here for any questions. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel for Native Hawaiian advancement. On Zoom. Not present. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, members, questions? Representative Kahlo.
For DBED, please. Just a quick question on the bill in itself. Is it a, is the execution of these funds for Native Hawaiian programs and services via DBED and the L N R, is it a pass-through grant program or how, what does the execution look like? Because it doesn't quite say in the bill.
Sure, it's, it's from our Business Development and Support Division and Ed Mark with our team to answer specific questions. And so we have a C BED program as well, so I'll have him come and talk details. Thank you.
Sure. The way, the way the H D one is written, it would be an R F P that we would put out and then we would have different organizations do proposals for the Innovation Center and then also for the virtual marketplace. And then it would be a contract we would do with them. That's what we administer it.
And so for the DBED side of this work, it would just be two R F Ps separate?
Correct. Because there'd be one for each virtual marketplace and then Innovation Center.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious because there are organizations doing this work across the state and actually not just one organization in particular. So to ensure that the funds get distributed equitably, I think my, my question and concern is how does it get allocated and do funds go to just one entity or multiple to ensure that the state, what, the state benefits from this?
Right.
And all the neighbor islands?
Right. There's two R, we, two R F Ps, one for the virtual marketplace. And yes, there are a different, a number of organizations that could do those virtual marketplaces or have been working on virtual marketplaces. And then also the same with innovation centers. So with the R F P, we'd have, you know, a review committee. We tried to be very fair scoring the proposals and things that come in. We put a lot of time and effort into writing the R F Ps so that the state does benefit. And it also fits into DBEDs programs because that's in our interest to get more Hawaii companies, Native Hawaiian-owned companies into e-commerce and selling their things online to not just Hawaii, but the rest of the world as well.
Thank you. I'd just like to request within the R F P to make sure all, all islands are served and that whoever the entity is that gets the award works with other entities that are doing the work because it's not only just one, that's so that it is being as far-reaching as possible.
Right. So noted, and I think on the first version, I have to go back to the second version, I think it is statewide the way the wording is. It doesn't specifically target just one.
As an example, there's four Native Hawaiian Chambers of Commerce. So do you give the R F P to just one or do you equitably ensure that collectively organizations work together?
They, organizations could collectively put in one proposal, let's say for the virtual marketplace. So you could have multiple organizations doing that. You could actually have a proposal with an innovation center that maybe part of it's in Hilo, maybe part of it's on Oahu or something like that, yeah. But it would have to be one proposal because we only, the way it's worded, we just have to do the... to do the two contracts.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Chair. May I do a follow-up? With the gentleman. So the end user is the Native Hawaiian entrepreneur, practitioner, innovator, et cetera, correct?
Yes, so it would be the Native Hawaiian, it would be the group that would do the Innovation Center or have the Virtual Marketplace, but the client of those would be the Native Hawaiian community and should benefit the Native Hawaiian community.
Does the money go down to them or they have to pay tuition to get the Innovation Center services, et cetera?
A lot of the services, I think, would be, that would be in the proposal, but I think a lot of those services would probably be free, such as the Innovation Center, it's supposed to be a resource center, Business Development Center, workshops, things to try to help Native Hawaiian-owned companies sort of grow and scale.
I would hope that would be in the RFP that it gets down to this.
Yes. We'll be very careful in the RFPs. There's a lot of wiggle room in here, and so we would try to be very specific. And also, we want to make it fit into DBED programs in our kind of mission as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 586 relating to Judiciary. First up is Judiciary. On Zoom.
Aloha, Chair. My name's Ernie De Lima. I'm with the OICD Judiciary. I stand on our written testimony at this time, and I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is the Department of the Prosecuting Attorney sitting in County Honolulu.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Deputy Prosecuting Attorney Mark Tom for the Department. Department is in support of House Bill 586, which is some amendments, specifically Page 6, lines 2 through 6, as well as 10 through 13. I think it's already addressed in the Judiciary's testimony, but the way that this bill is crafted, it says "shall provide information," and specifically, it's the phone number of an individual as well as an email, and it says "and," so it's both. We just want to make sure when officers come into contact with individuals that do not have a phone number, do not have an email, or they provide false information, that that does not create an incomplete, you know, insufficient or defective citation or arrest and causes problems within the court system. So we just provided some suggestive language, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you very much. Next up to testify, we have HCBA Stanley Roerig on Zoom.
Mr. Chairman, this is Stan Roerig. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
I'm a longtime practitioner in Hilo, and in the Third Circuit, we have JEFFs. And you file your pleadings, you file your pleadings on JEFFs, and oftentimes, when the court makes a short postponement, the communication with counsel falls through the cracks. And so this idea of having the court staff sending out emails to let counsel know when there's postponements is really a good idea because things move fast in the cases that are going to go to trial or where there's a lot of money involved. And oftentimes, we don't get noticed, and our staff are lucky if they get a phone call because the court's so busy. And as a consequence, just sending somebody a text message would not be adequate. This idea of shooting out an email to our email address, I think, is much more effective, at least in this circuit. And I have been practicing, doing trial work for over 50 years, and this is a real problem for me. I'm not as text savvy as some of my younger colleagues, but we do have, we do have a number of high-profile cases that I'm frightened with from time to time because the communications are inadequate. And I know the judiciary is concerned about this. We have numerous courts, family court, all kinds of situations where you need quick response. And because it sets up JEFFs and sometimes JIMs, we don't get it. And I'm happy to cooperate with somebody if they want to develop it for the various neighbor island counties, but I don't want a mahawai in this area if it doesn't involve our office because that's not my purpose of testifying. That's my testimony, Mr. Chairman and committee members. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wanting to testify on this measure? No? Okay, committee members, any questions? Yes, Representative Kobayashi.
Do we have someone from Judiciary?
On Zoom, Ernie De Lima?
Hello, yes.
Did you intend to have the word "shall" on Page 3, Line 15? It says that the automated court appearance reminder system shall be used in all traffic and criminal cases in district, family, and circuit courts, et cetera, which is, I think, a bit of a reach.
Well, I apologize, sir, because I'm not exactly sure with the rewrite of the bill if that was the intention or not, but I can certainly find that out for you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to our next bill, HB 68 relating to criminal justice. First up to testify is the Judiciary.
So Erin Harbison with the Criminal Justice Research Institute, we're administratively attached to Judiciary. We stand in strong support for House Bill 68. It is an appropriation request to create a pretrial database and reporting system pursuant to state law. We've provided written comments for our testimony, and we have included a budget breakdown from a feasibility study that we conducted to estimate the cost of creating this system. And I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Next up is the Hawaii Correctional System Oversight Commission.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is George Chee on behalf of Oversight Coordinator Kristen Johnson and the Hawaii Correctional System Oversight Commission. We strongly support this bill, and we stand by our written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Attorney General.
My name is Philip Higdon, Acting Administrator for Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center. We provided testimony in support of the intent of this bill. We understand the importance of what the Criminal Justice Research Institute is trying to accomplish. Without funding, for them to meet their objectives may be difficult. So we strongly support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the Department of Public Safety. Not here. Department of the Prosecuting Attorney.
Department stands on its written testimony support.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, committee, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go to our next bill, HB 95 relating to partial public financing of elections. First up to testify, we have the Campaign Spending Commission.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Finance Committee. My name is Gary Cam, and I'm with the Campaign Spending Commission. The purpose of this bill is to increase the amount of fines available to qualified candidates in Hawaii's partial public financing program. The amounts available have not been changed since 1995 or 1996, I believe. So it's about time to increase the amount of funding. I submitted written testimony in support, I'm not going to repeat it here, but in anticipation of testimony that is asking this committee to change this bill into a clean elections bill or a comprehensive financing program, I would like to add that the establishment of the partial public financing program was mandated by Article 2, Section 5 of the Hawaii Constitution. Further, the title of this bill expressly includes a partial public financing program. So I would urge this committee not to change this bill into a clean elections bill or comprehensive public financing bill. There is a vehicle from the Senate side, SB 11, I'm sorry, SB 1543, sorry, that was passed by WAM last Wednesday, and it's coming over to the House. And that is a clean elections bill, and that, if any consideration on the House should be on that bill and not on Spill 95. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Huli Pak. Maki Morinoi, not present? Okay. Next, we have our Hawaii, Evan Weber.
Aloha, Ma'akau. Mahalo, Vice Chair and committee members for the opportunity to testify. My name is Evan Weber. I am one of the co-founders and managing director of our Hawaii. Here on behalf of our thousands of members and supporters who want Hawaii to work for local working families, kamaaina and kanaka mali, not big-money interests, and we strongly believe that that begins with ending pay-to-play corruption in our politics where it begins in our election process. And so, yeah, I want to echo, I was just looking through the testimony, the vast majority of testimony, which was submitted on this bill, which says, okay, but really, this doesn't go far enough. And, you know, to Commissioner Cam's point, we don't believe, I don't believe if you look out there at sort of corruption in our politics that you can say that the program as established is actually living up to its constitutional duties. And so while the bill as written is well-intentioned, it wouldn't actually change things, and we need to actually solve the problem that that original title was set out to solve. The bill as written is more of an inflation adjustment for the cost of campaigning rather than actually solving the problem of big money in our politics. The Commission to Improve Standards of Conduct said in its recommendations that if we're going to expand partial, our public financing of elections, that, and we have a fiscal environment that allows, that we should fund it to the maximum amount we're capable. And given the historic surplus, we have some amendments that I would strongly urge the committee to consider, which would be to increase the percentage of maximum funds available to 99% of the expenditure limit, to change the match amount from $2 to $100 for every dollar of qualifying contributions, and to change the maximum qualifying contribution amount to $5 per donor and limit it to people in the district so it's more representative of grassroots folks in the district opting for these candidates to go in. And last but not least, prohibit candidates who meet the minimum qualifying contribution threshold and qualify for the program to be prohibited from accepting or spending private dollars after that. And to anticipate stuff around the title, I do want to note this still would be a partial public financing program as it, nobody would be mandated to participate in this program, and there still would be candidates who would choose to run in the conventional status quo way, accepting private contributions. And we'll remain around for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up, we have Nate Hicks on Zoom. Not present. Okay, anyone else wanting to testify on this measure? Nope, seeing none. Okay, committee members, any questions? Okay, no questions. We're going to go to our next bill on the agenda, HB 42 relating to campaign finance. First up, we have the Campaign Spending Commission.
Good afternoon again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I submitted written comments, and I will just stand on, it was just a brief statement. I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's all we have who indicated they wanted to testify. Is there anyone else who wants to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, committee members, any questions? Okay, seeing no questions. Okay, we're going to go to our next one, HB 92. This is relating to violations of campaign finance law. First up to testify, Campaign Spending Commission.
Good afternoon again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. This bill would allow the commission to increase fines that the commission can assess against super PACs and including holding the officers of super PACs personally responsible for any fines. We've been trying for a while now to get the fines against super PACs increased. We hope that this committee passes this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all that have indicated they want to testify. Is there anyone else who wants to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, committee members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go to our next one, HB 126 relating to public corruption. First up to testify, we have the Attorney General's Office on Zoom. Oh, here, perfect.
Good afternoon. My name's David Van Acker. I am the supervisor for the Special Investigation and Prosecution Division. We rest on our testimony, which is in strong support of this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Campaign Spending Commission.
Good afternoon again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I will stand on brief written testimony in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Department of the Prosecuting Attorney.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Deputy Prosecuting Attorney Mark Tom for the Department. This is part of our legislative package, so I appreciate the committee hearing this bill. We do stand on our testimony in strong support. We'll be here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we have the Honolulu Police Department on Zoom.
Aloha, I'm Captain Parker Bodie of the Honolulu Police Department. The HPD supports House Bill 126, and we stand by our written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wanting to testify on this measure? Yes, on Zoom? Okay, please proceed.
Hi, my name is Teresa Harden, and I would like to testify on HB 126. I am in support of this bill, and I would like, I would like the rule of no more than three offenses in three years to be removed. There should be a zero tolerance on this, we should create a zero tolerance policy on this. And if someone accepts a bribe two, two times or more, then there should be the strictest penalties for that, as well as being removed from their official position, I'd like to add, or capacity. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to testify.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else? Nope. Okay, seeing no other testifiers, committee members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go to our next bill on the agenda, HB 719 relating to public records. First up to testify, we have DLNR.
Aloha, Laura Kaakua with DLNR. The Department stands on our written testimony. I did want to just highlight a few, a few points in addition. The Department and the Bureau of Conveyances in particular has made massive strides in digitizing our records, so most of the records are now available to the public electronically. We did want to ask that you consider our proposed amendments, which would suggest that the Office of Information practices and setting its fees take into consideration the expense that it costs to have staff digitize records. And we have other amendments there, and we would like to ask that, should this measure move forward? We really do need to exempt the Bureau of Conveyances. You can imagine the amount of records that we have as we serve the entire state and hold that record of all properties. And so with our staff, who are very efficient, but sometimes when requests come in that are very broad, it's, the standard being proposed here is in the public interest, so that can be a little subjective. And what we're concerned about is having staff And what we're concerned about is having staff not be able to serve multiple members of the public every day, but have to work on one request that might take them weeks or even months to fulfill if the, if there's no parameters put around the broad, broad request. So thank you for hearing our testimony.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Department of Accounting and General Services.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, representing Keith Regan, I am Dr. Adam Jansen, and I have the privilege of serving as state archivist and administrator of the state archives. And DAG stands on its testimony of comments, like our friends at the Bureau of Conveyances and Department of Health Vital Records, we are nothing but permanent records. Everything we have is of public interest. So we're asking and hoping for some clarification that, like the Bureau and Vital Records, the archives is explicitly listed out of this because everything we have, I mean, we would just be inundated with requests. So I welcome any questions or concerns you may have, and thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Office of Information Practices on Zoom. Not present. Okay, next, we have the Civil Law Center for the Public Interest.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Brian Black, Executive Director for the Civil Law Center for the Public Interest. This bill was, proposal was unanimously passed by the legislature last session. Governor Igai, or vetoed it. Governor Green supports it. It's very limited in scope. It's, the fiscal impact is minimal, but the impact it will have in terms of public education for folks who are going to learn about government activities is huge. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Next is Life of the Land, Henry Curtis on Zoom. Not present. Okay, next, we have Honolulu Collaborative.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, we're collaborative and we'll stand on our testimony in support.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Oh, yes, DEO.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Chair, members of the committee, Colonel DeGroot, Deputy Superintendent, testifying on behalf of Superintendent Hayashi. The department actually stands on this written testimony in opposition to this, and I apologize if we didn't have you marked down, but we're not, obviously, the department is not opposed to public having access to state information, that they have a right to it. I think what we're saying is that, as our colleagues, my colleagues have said, it's really a definitional issue, and it can get out of hand if there's a cap. If, in a perfect world, the state will digitize every document so it can be accessible, but at this time, many departments have gone forward on their records to automate and digitize, but a lot of the older records are still in paper-based forms, so it'd be a lot of work. And so I share with my colleagues that this committee reconsider how we would implement such a thing. The public does have a right to having documents, but it's a matter of execution, and it'll be a burden for many departments. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We do have your testimony in opposition. Thank you, sorry about that. Okay, anyone else wanting to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, committee members, any questions? Yes, Representative Ward.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Black, Civil Law, please. Mr. Black, how long have you been fighting this issue?
Costs, costs generally ever since the Law Center was created about 10 years ago.
So there's progress. Do you have any, I know this is a bit unconventional, and the chair may stop me, but have you any way to repel or retort to those who say, hey, this is going to be too costly, too time-consuming vis-à-vis what is here, what they may have in terms to do to do on your side is transparency, openness, and government for the people?
So historically, the similar version of this public interest waiver has only affected about 5% of requests, and the amounts that were paid last year by public interest organizations that would qualify was less than $5,000.
Do they, that's surprising, but are there any other states that have this, and it's a no-brainer that, look, you want to do it? What's the status of other places?
There's, a majority of jurisdictions have some version of a public interest waiver, and a true waiver, what we have is a $60 discount, but they have a true waiver where costs aren't imposed. And in addition to that, this, this language that is mimicked in the bill is based on the federal standard for a public interest waiver. So it comes with, with it by using that language about 40 years of precedent in case law.
Could you repeat your estimation of what this costs for the 5% that this impacts?
I, I, I don't know what the total fiscal impact would be because there are requests that are abandoned, but the actual amount that was paid last year by public interest organizations was less than $5,000.
Surprisingly. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go to the next bill, HB 1113. This is relating to the Drug and Alcohol Toxicology Testing Laboratory. First up to testify, we have the State Department of Transportation on Zoom. DOT, are you here for this measure? Yes, okay.
Yeah, okay. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Finance Committee. This is Carrie Bennis with the Department of Transportation, and we stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Hawaii Police Department on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name's Tori Keltner. I'm the Program Manager of Traffic Services at the Hawaii Police Department. I'm here testifying on behalf of the department in support of House Bill 1113. I did want to take a minute and just explain how important it is that this passed. In 2020, Clinical Labs was performing tests for us, and they informed our department as well as the other, could no longer be performing these toxicology tests, which really put us in a precarious position. Fortunately, the City County of Honolulu Emergency Services Lab stepped up and volunteered to help us temporarily so that we could actually continue to, or have the test conducted. And then unfortunately, at some point there, we overwhelmed them with the amount of testing that was being sent forward to them, and they also said that they wouldn't be able to continue with that. We were very lucky that the Department of Transportation stepped up and actually assisted with this and provided a temporary position inside the City County of Honolulu Emergency Services Lab to assist with the workload that's in there. But it is a temporary position that if this bill is passed, we'd be able to make it a permanent position and then continue with the testing that's so solely important for us to be successful in collecting these evidentiary samples and, you know, can, performing our duties as law enforcement agencies across the state. So just, the Hawaii Police Department stands strongly on this and very much supports it. We really, really hope that it's passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wanting to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, committee members, any questions? Oh, Representative Ward.
The last testifier by Zoom?
Mr. Keltner?
Yes, Mr. Keltner. Regarding the laboratory test, is there a test for drug driving yet? This is becoming increasingly important, and does your lab have that or working on it?
Well, I'm not a member of the lab. I work, work for the Hawaii Police Department.
Oh, sorry.
But, but these tests are, the ones that we're speaking for, in this instance for us, are directly related to that. So yes, it is part of the, the testing for impaired driving.
So that test does exist. Is it only when it gets back to the lab, or is it where, when someone is pulled over, like you can do a DUI breathalyzer? What's the state?
In these cases, it would be, it would be a test, this, these are blood samples that are being tested. So they would have been transported to, in our case, to, you know, medical facility here on the Big Island, and then, and then the samples are collected there and then submitted through a process to that lab.
The invasive option only, then, so far?
Well.
It doesn't mean that you got to draw blood, which is another legal issue.
Correct, yes, a blood sample.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go to our next bill, HB 480. This is relating to highway safety. First up to testify, we have the Department of Transportation.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Toby Wakamoto with the State Department of Transportation. We stand on our written testimony and have provided comments for House Bill 480.
Thank you very much. There are other pieces of testimony in support, but no one has indicated they are planning to testify. Is there anyone else here wanting to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, committee members, any questions for the DOT? Yes, Representative Kobayashi.
Does DOT have a better definition for the special interest vehicle?
We do not currently, and we've been working with Attorney General's Office, trying to come up with a better definition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go to our next bill, HB 277. This is relating to motor vehicle insurance. There is one testifier who submitted in support, but they have indicated they were, or have not indicated they'd be present. So is there anyone wanting to testify on this bill? Okay, seeing none, committee members, we're going to go to the next bill because there's no one to ask questions of. So the next bill is HB 582. This is relating to sexual abuse of minors. First up to testify is the Attorney General's Office.
Good afternoon, Chair and Committee. Deputy Attorney General Amanda Weston. My, our comments are limited to a portion of the bill opening or reopening the statute of limitations. First of all, we understand the purpose and the intent of the bill, but believe that in today's climate and increased awareness of the issue, issue of child sexual abuse, the need for the bill is not as strong as it once may have been. Secondly, we are handling multiple cases right now arising from incidents that took place in the 1960s and 1970s and 1980s. Witnesses, evidence, and even several perpetrators are dead or lost. This makes defending the cases very, very difficult, and it makes prosecuting the cases very difficult. Third, in most cases, at least as it is to the state, it is not the perpetrators that end up paying these claims. It's, it's the state. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. Next up is the Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii on Zoom. Not present. Okay, next up is Child U.S. Advocacy on Zoom. Not present. Okay, next up is the Sex Abuse Treatment Center.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Lynn Castalis, and I am the Executive Director of the Sex Abuse Treatment Center, and we are in strong support of this particular legislation. We think it is a very important issue that should come to light, should be passed. It is an opportunity to protect children. The bill does not have a retroactive effect. It is not here, it is not meant to revive old claims. It is really an opportunity to protect the kids who are being abused now, so that they can bring their case forward in the years to come. Many kids are silent. Without this bill, they will continue to be silenced because they will not have an opportunity to come forward when they are ready. So for that reason, we ask that this bill be passed, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have the American Property Casualty Insurance Association. Not present. Okay, next up, we has, have CARES Community Advocacy Research Education Services on Zoom. Next, we have Jaren Yamouche on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and member of the committee. My name is Jaren Yamouche, and I'm currently an MSW student at the University of Hawaii, studying to work with children and families. I'm giving testimony today in support of HB 582. As a child and family social work student, I worked with clients who have experienced sexual abuse at a young age, and have also had loved ones in my life who have experienced sexual abuse. As is well documented, the lasting impacts of sexual trauma at a young age lead to stunted developmental and emotional growth for a majority of individuals. To everyone, the processing of trauma is one that cannot be rushed or forced, and it must happen at a pace that is comfortable for the individual. The passing of HB 582 will allow minors to process their sexual abuse at a pace that they feel can feel more comfortable in a time where comfortability has been taken from them. It will also allow the training and education needed on trauma-informed responses to sexual abuse and teach individuals how they can help. I appreciate the time and opportunity to state my testimony today.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Mark Gallagher. Not present. Okay, anyone else wanting to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, committee members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to our last bill on this agenda, HB 1145 relating to equity. First up, we have Jerry Sugano.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Jerry Sugano. I'm the parent of two children with special needs, ever-changing needs. I came before the legislature 10 years ago asking for help, and I'm here again today. Children like my daughter who are incontinent cannot utilize or access the restrooms here in the state Capitol as well as in the state buildings. As you fund and govern over new state buildings, we humbly ask that you consider the installation of universal changing stations. Universal changing stations can withstand heavier weights and can provide a safe and hygienic place for seniors, older children, especially those with disabilities. It provides them a place where they can change their incontinent supplies. Without a place to use a restroom, many individuals have to decide how long they can stay away from home, whether to change in their cars, change on the restroom floor, or to stay home completely. A person's inability to use a conventional restroom facility directly affects their ability to enjoy and fully participate in community-based activities. Thank you very much for the opportunity to provide, provide strong support for HB 1145.
Mahalo. Thank you. Next up, we have Ka'ili on Zoom. Not present. Okay, anyone else wanting to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, committee members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to recess for decision-making. We'll be back in about 15 minutes for decision-making. Recession.
Okay, we're gonna reconvene the Committee on Finance for our second agenda. First up is House Bill 148 HD1. Recommendation is to pass as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 418 HD1 as is. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Representative Ayu.
Aye.
Representative Chun.
Aye.
Representative Cochran.
Aye.
Representative Garrett.
Aye.
Representative Kahaloa.
Aye.
Representative Kila.
Aye.
Representative Kobayashi.
Aye.
Representative Lamosaw.
Aye.
Representative Morikawa.
Aye.
Representative Nishimoro.
Aye.
Representative Poipoi.
Aye.
Representative Takanouchi.
Aye.
Representative Alcos.
Aye.
Representative Ward.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 1035 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1035 HD1 as is, noting the presence of all members. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1036 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1036 HD1 as is, noting the presence of all members will be noted present for the rest of this agenda. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1037 HD2 as is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1037 HD2 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1371 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1371 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1385 HD2 as is. Discussion. Representative Kahaloa.
I'm gonna vote with reservations, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any further? Representative Poipoi. Thank you. Representative Kila.
Reservations, Chair.
Anyone else? Representative Ayu.
Same request.
Representative Garrett. Same request. Representative Cochran. Same request.
Garrett, Cochran.
Okay, any others? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1385 HD2 as is, noting the reservations of representatives Ayu, Cochran, Garrett, Kahaloa, Kila, and Poipoi. Are there any additional reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 908 HD1. We're gonna be moving this out as an HD2. We're gonna be blanking out the ceiling appropriation and tech. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 908 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Members voting on House Bill 994 HD1 as is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 994 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Reservations by Representative Poipoi. Any additional reservations?
Chair, for questions.
Representative Cochran, reservations? Any additional? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Voting on House Bill 562 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 562 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 15 HD2 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 15 HD2 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 538 HD1 as is. Discussion. Representative Kobayashi.
There was no one supporting the bill in testimony.
I understand.
And a lot of people are opposing.
Yeah. We're gonna move it forward for discussion purposes.
I'd like to go WR on this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Representative Kahaloa.
Thank you, Chair. We'd like to vote the same. WR, please.
Okay, thank you. Any? Representative Ward.
Same request.
Okay, thank you. Any others?
Same request.
Representative Ayu. Representative Kila.
I signed the bill and I appreciate, and it's no knock against the introducer, the purpose of the bill, but I... We'll have to vote with reservations. Thank you.
Okay, understood. Any further discussion? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 538 HD1 as is, noting the reservations of representatives Ayu, Kahaloa, Kila, Kobayashi, Alcos, and Ward. Are there any additional reservations? Representative Lamosaw, any additional? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 37 as is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 37 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 1508 HD1 as is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1508 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 586 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you. Good catch. Okay, members, we're gonna pass this out as an HD2 and we're gonna be putting a defective date to clarify that it is defective, because it's in two places. One place is upon approval, so we're gonna, we're gonna put a defective date there. And then tech. Any discussion?
What about the prosecutors amendments?
We'll deal with that in conference, okay? Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay, Vice Chair.
Okay, recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 586 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 68 HD1 as is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 68 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 95 HD1. We're gonna be moving this out as an HD2. Defected, defective, defecting, the effective date and tech. You got it. Okay, Vice Chair.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 95 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 42 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 42 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on. House Bill 92 as is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 92 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 126 HD1 as is. Any discussion?
Chair.
Yeah, Representative Ward.
Chair, bribery is bribery. Whether this is 20,000 or whatever cumulative or actual amount, I don't see the logic of saying, you know, you can be a felon if you have a cumulative or $20,000. I mean, sometimes it could be 5,000, 10,000. Why 20,000? I don't see the logic. So I hope that in the committee report, that's something that the amount is questionable. So I have a reservation. I'd like to vote no, but if I vote no, they think, oh, you wanna vote for corrupt individuals. The point is, the threshold is too high, because bribery is bribery by any other name, even 500 bucks that slip through the...
Okay, Subj Manner actually does, I think, the, he defected this bill also, so he wants to come back and deal with it further. So for now, we're gonna keep the measure moving forward so we can have further discussion on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 126 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Reservations by Representative Ward. Any additional reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 719 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 719 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 1113 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1113 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 480 HD1 as is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 480 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 277 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 277 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 582 HD1 as is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 582 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 1145 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1145 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna adjourn this hearing and move on to our third two-minute. Okay, the Committee on Finance will come to order. We're gonna move on to our third agenda. First up is House Bill 27 HD1. Members, this is a, there's no testifiers on this measure. This is a vehicle to deal with budget appropriations if we need it in conference. So we're gonna move on to the next bill. There's no one to ask questions of. We're gonna move on to the next bill, House Bill 21 HD1. This one also, there's no testifiers. Members, this is a vehicle for us to deal with statutory changes that we may need in conference for the budget. And so we're gonna move on to the next bill, House Bill 647 HD1 relating to alcohol. First up is Department of Taxation.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Kristin Sakamoto for DOTAX. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments and available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Lonikai Brewing Company on Zoom.
Hi, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thanks for the opportunity to testify. We're very much in support of this bill just to clarify language and allow another category for local manufacturers to continue to, to compete in the marketplace. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm here for questions if you need them.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Maori Brewing Company. Not here. Okay, we also have Onako Brewing Company on Zoom. Also not here. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next bill, House Bill 503 relating to computer science education. First up, the Department of Education.
Good afternoon, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitagawa, I'm Heidi Armstrong, Department of Education, and we stand on our written testimony, offering comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Board of Education.
Hi. Good afternoon. This is Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitagawa, and members of the committee. This is Bill Arakaki, Board of Education representative. Sorry, I'm here with my grandson again. We stand by our board's testimony in support of this bill. And thank you so much for your continued support for Keke and the Department of Education and the whole island of the state of Hawaii. Thank you so much. I stand by for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Next is Hawaii Kids Can.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. Hawaii Kids Can stands on our written testimony in strong support. We do think this is a really, really important measure to move forward, to make sure that the collaboration happens between the Board of Education and Department of Education that'll move this issue forward. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Co.org. Here.
Hi there.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Amber Davis. I'm with Co.org, happy to be helping this movement to expand computer science across the nation. We're so grateful for all that your great state has done to help move things forward, but we've seen still a large gap in the difference between girls and boys taking computer science, and we think that the movement towards a graduation requirement and the consideration of that by the Board of Education would be a really great step forward to help close that gap. So, would appreciate all of your favorable support.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none. Members, questions? Representative Ward.
The Board of Education, please. Is some, wait a minute, someone?
Someone from the Board of Education?
Hi, I'm here.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Arakaki. The definition of computer science, pretty broad. Is there some specificity that you could say? Because, you know, these kids are pretty smart already in terms of how to navigate their iPhones in the computer. What do you speculate it'll entail or should be in the bill or implied by the bill when it says computer science?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Definitely, computer science education is a broad range and, you know, with this terminology that's in the bill, working with the Department of Education, we'll be able to analyze what that would look like and be able to come up with information to you folks regarding what that would really look like. And you're right, our generation of learners today are much different from when I was in school, and so it is broad. We need to be more specific and find out what that is when we do our announces.
Yeah, they might be able to teach the teachers even more than they may know, but thank you for that. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Representative Ayu followed by Kila.
How many, how many schools teach computer science classes?
Yeah, I'm gonna call up Brett Tanaka, who is our computer science specialist. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, per our Act 158 legislation report, this is based on last year's data, we had approximately, roughly about 80% of the high schools were offering computer science courses, and then roughly about 40% of the elementary schools are offering computer science. So it's still kind of a work in progress that this is the first year of Act 158 legislative goal to achieve 100%, in three years.
Okay, so it's not really about, like, the availability. It's just whether we're gonna make it a requirement or not.
Yes, we're trying to also build out the infrastructure, so to speak, to be able to deliver these opportunities for students.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Representative Kila followed by Ward.
Hi, from Ms. Armstrong. Hi. Do you feel the DOE right now has in more, more or less than rigorous requirements that may not be indirectly but directly taught around computer sciences?
Well, we've recently adopted the computer science standards, and that sets the bar for, or the expectations for what will be taught, for what we're expecting students to know and be able to do when we offer our computer science programming. And so as we move forward with this movement, it will be the standards that dictate the content of our courses.
Is there any concern that the workforce now where teachers may have pushed back against teaching computer sciences?
Um, no, but we'll, we'll need to continue to recruit teachers in computer science, but we'll, we'll continue the work on that.
Are we competitive now in our Hawaii state education versus the United States of computer sciences?
I think computer science is, is a movement, I mean, across the nation. I, I do recognize that our, we do have underrepresented groups. I don't think that's unique to Hawaii, but we do need to continue to focus our efforts in ensuring that we, what we offer it equitably, but that we have... But we do need to continue to, um, focus our efforts in ensuring that we, um, what we offer it equitably, but that we have an equitable representation of who's participating.
Because I think even, I can get ignorant to the idea that I, I feel like folks should know it, right? But then I have to humble myself, understand that there are rural communities who don't even have broadband. And I just think a lot of the learning happens in and outside of the classroom and barriers that we can create, that we may indirectly be creating for folks who don't have the same toolkit for computer sciences. So, thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Representative Ward?
Thank you, Chair.
The computer science expert? Everybody? Yes, sir. Yeah, you are the one. Could you give a sample of the syllabus of what your computer science classes look like so far?
Okay, so in, in the classroom, there's actually a wide variety of scenarios for computer science learning. On one end, we have what is called unplugged computer science and basically teaching computer science without any type of technology, um, you know, like computers or devices. And then we have the other end of the spectrum where we call it plugged computer science, where basically you have access to devices, computers, robotics. And so the experience kind of varies, but the bottom line is that we are trying to provide as comprehensive, uh, uh, learning as possible, given the resources that we have available. So it really depends on the classroom, uh, what that experience might look like. But ultimately, we are trying to, um, again, provide the best experience for students.
But the desired outcome, when they finish the course, what can they do with what you've taught them?
Yeah, so again, based on the standards, there are progressions of skill. Uh, it, it, it covers basically five areas within the computer science standards. So, uh, includes computing systems, which is, uh, being, um, familiar what, uh, computer devices are. Uh, it covers data and analysis. How do you collect data and analyze data? We have programming and algorithms, which deals with learning of programming languages, how to create application. Uh, we have networks and the internet, which is sort of a, a broad area in terms of understanding how does the information travel across the internet. And then the last one is the impact of computing, which has to do with topics like digital citizenship, cyberbullying, uh, information literacy, media, media literacy. Uh, it is collectively, um, the broad area that's covered.
Have they got a computer in front of them doing this, or they have their phone in front of them?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again?
Do they have the, do they have a computer while they're doing this with practical applications? Or their phone?
Right, so that, again, that, uh, depends on the classroom, um, resources. Um, ideally, we are leveraging the technology in terms of computers, broadband access, and devices.
Last question. Are you gonna put Chat G P T in your curriculum?
Uh.
Half serious, half rhetorical, because it looks like it's coming and coming in a big wave. So I would encourage you to consider that.
Yes, and I would say, uh, yes, because that's the world that we are preparing our students for, that technology is constantly evolving and that it will impact them. Uh, whether they are a, you know, just a citizen using online, um, services, to someone who might be going into the industry, who might be impacted or be using those types of tools.
Thank you. And one of the other testifiers said that be mindful that the average salary of the computer science graduate is over eighty-three thousand dollars. So, there's a future for those who really are serious in those classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative, are you?
Uh, one more, one more question on requirements. The, would taking computer science, like, satisfy, like, a science requirement in school? Or are we adding on additional requirement that has no overlap, or can you explain?
Yes, so we've taken an approach that, uh, computer science is not an equivalent to science or math, which has been done, uh, on the national level in some states. But we acknowledge that, you know, computer science in itself, I, I just described what, what the different content areas is. So it would not be such that there would be an equivalency. So we're approaching it that computer science is a whole, um, separate content area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any, Representative Kobayashi?
For DOE, um, it seems to me that this bill asks for a report which may be going in the wrong direction. That is, you're supposed to report upon whether or not computer science should be a graduation requirement. The bigger problem which has been discussed, discussed here is that computer science is a broad definition, which kind of means different things to different people. So perhaps as this bill goes along, you might think about a report in which you assess what DOE is doing to make students more computer literate and also to make students understand both the software, hardware, uh, systems, um, issues for, um, computer competence. Um, rather than just having a report about computer science as a graduation requirement. Because that, that report could be two pages long and not very helpful.
Okay, thank you for that feedback. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next bill, House Bill nine-four-two H D two relating to emergi- emergency medical response. First up is the Attorney General Office.
Good afternoon, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitagawa, members, and Horiuchi, Department of the Attorney General. Um, as we set forth in our testimony, the department has suggested some language that we, uh, hope would provide some clarification to the way that certain terms are used in the bill. Also, we are suggesting that, um, the bill include language that would address the potential liability of critical emergency response team members. And we've, um, provided that in our testimony. Um, I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Department of Education.
Good afternoon. The Department of Education stands on its testimony, offering comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Amanda Nunn.
Hi, folks. Thanks for having me. Um, I'm the parent that drafted the language for this bill after an incident with my son. And I stand by our written testimony as it's been updated. I would like to add that the language in this bill currently says that the team members on the critical, uh, response teams are to respond in good faith when activated. But there isn't any specific language about what that means. And so I would continue to encourage folks to look at the current language in the, in the Senate companion bill that, that indicates that there's a requirement for practicing, for activation, a mechanism that every school has to make sure that they can get one of those team members to the right place at the right time via a known mechanism when there is one of those minutes matter, um, critical medical emergencies. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, questions? Okay, Representative Kobayashi.
Is, for DOE, do you have anything like this emergency response already in place?
Schools do have emergency response team, but they don't have, all of the members of that team don't have the training that is specified in this bill. So they might not all be CPR trained or be trained to use the defibrillator, et cetera.
I think that this bill has a fatal flaw. Um, it defines critical emergency as immediate danger of loss of life. It doesn't say serious injury. I would suspect that for every case where you have, um, a immediate danger of loss of life, you have ten or more cases where it involves just, not, I don't mean to say just, but involves serious injury. So you've got a bill going in the direction of rarity, the rare event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next bill. House Bill fourteen-twelve relating to libraries. First up is Department of Education.
Good afternoon. Um, the department stands on its testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next is the Hawaii State Public Library System.
Mallory Fujitani for State Labor and Stasiology is standing in support of our written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is the Association of American Publishers.
Chair, we stand on our testimony and opposition.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, questions? Seeing none, okay, we're gonna move on to the next bill. House Bill two-five-eight H D one relating to the acquisition of Saint Francis School campus for the University of Hawaii at Manoa. First up is, or only up is Calvert Young, U H.
Good afternoon, Chair, members. The University of Hawaii, uh, we are supportive of this, uh, bill. The university has been working, um, on this acquisition, or the prospect of this acquisition, for a number of years. Um, our testimony, though, has provided comments and information, um, about the actual transaction that you should be aware of. Uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, question? Representative Garrett?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Young. Just for the committee's edification, what are some potential uses you see for this site where U H to acquire it?
Um, so when the university started working on this, um, project several years ago, it, the targeted uses included, um, faculty housing as probably the number one opportunity. But also, um, student housing as, as an opportunity, and then, um, classroom expansion, which is less of an opportunity now, and administrative services. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Calvert. Please.
Um, go ahead, Representative Ward.
How big is the square footage and how many buildings? What, what's the asset definition look like?
So, so currently, this site is, um, about, just a little bit over eleven acres. Um, there's, so it's a, Saint Francis School was a K twelve institution that operated on the property up until about twenty sixteen-ish, seventeen. Um, those facilities still exist on the property. Um, there, there's like a multi-story dormitory, um, that the sisters, Saint, the Saint Francis Order was using up until probably about twenty twenty-ish. Um, until they were able to relocate to a, their own retirement location. And then there's classrooms and admin buildings that are on there.
This is right behind the Manoa campus?
It's a, yes, it's on, it's at the, uh, rear of the campus, um, inland Maoka.
But Japson is at the end near the facilities, maintenance people? Is it be, is it just beyond that one?
Right, so, um, if you're familiar with the campus, at the very far rear of the campus where East-West Center Road and Miley Way
Yes.
converge, um, there's the base yard, um, location, and there's a large parking area for, um, U H and East-West Center properties. The school is, right next to it is the Newman Center, which is a Catholic, um, parish. Um, and then there's a preschool, though, that's actually where Saint Francis property begins. That's not University of Hawaii property. And then further back into the valley is a parking area and the school itself.
The amount is blank. Is there any ballpark figure, minimum, maximum? What, are you in negotiations and you can't say anything?
Well, okay, so to be clear, um, the sisters listed this property and have, and they have a broker, a real estate broker representing. The asking price or the expected price is in the area of thirty million dollars. The university, back in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen-ish, we did put in an offer to purchase. It was not thirty million, as far less, um, based on what the university has as an appraisal and what we would have desired to have as an intended use. So this is a private transaction. This bill doesn't insert the university, or the state for that matter, um, into the transaction. If you were to do this bill, the university would have to pursue, um, you know, our normal procedures and process as part of a, a, a private transaction to see if the seller would be interested, um, in entertaining an offer. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure what the legislature would want to propose as appropriating for this transaction. But, you know, I'll tell you, in the terms of the order of magnitude, it's, you know, the university has an appraisal. Appraisal was less than twenty, less than twenty million. The seller, I believe, desires something closer to thirty million based on what they've listed the property for.
And it's not gonna be all by you guys at U H?
My, if, if you do the bill, what I would propose for the state is that the University of Hawaii acquire this property. And, and the university is one of the agencies in the state that can actually own title to real estate. That it makes the most sense for the university to acquire it and own it.
So should you negotiate the price before we pass the bill, or should the bill have an amount and say, take it or leave it, or?
So right now, right now, as of today, um, this property is in escrow to a private purchaser. We are, so the university is, we are not, like, involved or engaged in, um, doing this transaction. It's purely the, the rights and desires of the seller. And they have, they're currently in escrow with somebody, a non-governmental entity that's not the University of Hawaii. So, um, as I mentioned in testimony, I view that this bill is an, is opportunistic. This property, as far as I know, has been in escrow at least twice and possibly three times and has fallen out for whatever reasons. If there should come a situation where the current prospective purchaser should happen to fall out of escrow or desire, or, or decide that they're not interested, the state and U H would be at the ready to entertain, um, you know, negotiations with the seller. But again, it's a, this bill doesn't provide any condemnation powers. It would, it's a purely a, it would be a purely private transaction.
And if the escrow goes through, this becomes totally rude.
Yes, correct.
But I think it's wise that you're expanding. You guys are a key economic driver in your potential, and that's not the issue. Thank you very much for that. Thank you, Chair.
Representative Kobayashi?
Um, your U H testimony says this bill does not grant any special powers or authorities to the university to acquire the property. Um, do you have any such, uh, special powers or authorities that you might want to make the acquisition easier or faster, or?
No.
No?
No.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Calvert?
Um, originally, when we talked about this in the past, you said that it, um, could be financed with revenue bond. Is that still a possibility if the price was correct, right?
So, uh, previously, the university did have legislative revenue bond authority and appropriation of revenue bonds to acquire this property back in twenty eighteen, nineteen-ish, around there. So there was previous, that authority has lapsed. Um, when we, and, and that was the basis for us to submit a bid on this property, on this property with the seller. So when we submitted a bid, it was based on partial funding identified as revenue bonds. Um, that authority has since lapsed. And when we did that offer, it was with the idea, so revenue bonds require revenue. So the project that we would have to do would have been faculty housing or some form of housing to generate a form of revenue to pay back the bonds, basically. I still think that that is a possibility. Um, however, for the type of housing that we had contemplated, faculty housing, the amount of revenue does not support thirty million dollars in revenue bonds, right? We could never driven, generate that much revenue in order to pay back the bond. So if you do a revenue bonds structure, it would be So if you do a revenue bonds structure, it would be limited to the extent of how much, you know, revenue I could generate. That would dictate what we could actually offer if the means of financing was revenue bonds.
Okay, so do you have an idea of what kind of, what the amount of the revenue bond needs to be and offset by some other means of financing for it to work?
The first time around, so keep in mind, this was, you know, what, three and a half, four years ago. The first time around, with the interest rate markets and the cost of construction at the time, acquisition and then construction of faculty housing limited the land acquisition to something less than 20 million. I'm not, I don't know if we were to pull those plans off in the current environment, if we could still make those numbers work at that amount. So that's why it's a, it's kind of a moving piece.
Interest rates have doubled, so.
Yeah, interest rates have doubled. You know, this thing about construction cost inflation, supply chain disruption has led to a lot of that. Yeah, it, it is a different environment, and I don't have, I couldn't tell you a fresh look in terms of what the project would look like.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Any further questions?
If the legislature does fund this money to the university, even if the university can't generate the 30 million that you save with the cost for the property, would you be open to refunding the legislature for, like, a debt by the revenue you generate?
Well, if you, if, if the legislature does this bill but puts it as revenue bonds?
Or puts it as a general appropriation?
I think I would want to be clear that if the legislature thinks that you're gonna put up money and then I'm gonna be able to generate revenue sufficient to cover what the state would be paying on those, on the GO bonds or whatever, that would be the same thing as doing via revenue. I wouldn't be able to do a project just because it's revenue bonds. If I couldn't do it under, you know, UH revenue bonds and the expectation was that you're gonna give me general obligation bonds and I'm supposed to repay it, it would be the same, you know, mathematics, right? So I'm, I'm telling you right now that.
My understanding is this is coming from general fund money?
I, so the way I view this bill was that if the state was to provide the funds for acquisition, I would tell you that UH would probably pursue a use that we could make work for, say, faculty housing, but the land cost would have been essentially zero for the university because the state would have acquired it via this bill.
Okay, my, my only concern is that you're, you're gonna be able to generate new revenues and then still come to the legislature every year for other revenues, or for other monies, when you have a whole new pot of, like, housing that you can generate some revenue from.
True, acknowledged. But we do that already, right? There already is faculty housing. So there already is faculty housing built in Manoa that's already 20-plus years old. The state was the one that actually acquired and built the housing. UH runs it, right? But we don't ask for money for, to pay for the operations of the faculty housing. So it's, it's still kind of this public subsidized housing, if you will, right? So the money that gets generated from faculty housing pays for the operation and maintenance of faculty housing. But we don't ask, we don't come back here asking you for money to fund faculty housing, even though the state was the initial, you know, funder of, of that construction. I mean, it's kind of the same idea that I would envision for this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Okay. I'll follow one more time. So I've always believed, when we first talked about this, UH is probably the logical choice for this property because it's kind of landlocked and the other access road is very narrow and not, wasn't able to be, you know, increased capacity to come in and out. So you would be the logical person to buy it. If, and for me, it's just making numbers work along the lines of what Representative Ayu is talking about. So if, if we did cash, right, but we amortized it over 30 years, could you make that work? And reimburse the state?
Again, it depends on how much.
You could figure out the numbers.
It depends on the project. Yeah, it would depend on the, it would depend on the project. It would depend on how much it is and what we actually end up building there.
Okay, so we could work on it. Again, I, again, I think, I think you're the logical tenant, I mean, the logical buyer, right? So.
Yeah, I mean, I.
We just gotta work it out.
I, I think from a land use and a property development perspective, I cannot think of any other entity, including a state entity, that would make more sense. But to be clear, right, we are not in this transaction. This is, the current seller has picked a potential buyer and they are negotiating, so.
So we, we gotta see how it plays out.
Right.
Okay, Representative Ward.
Just to follow up with the logical buyer, a logical partner obviously would be your adjacent colleagues at the East-West Center. Has there been any discussion of that potential equity partner if there's a revenue issue?
No.
But they are adjacent to, right, to that, well, not immediately adjacent, but within the vicinity?
They're separate, there's a, they're separate, they're not adjacent to this property, but they're only separated by a parking lot that's maybe like 75, 80 yards.
Close by.
Yeah, yeah. But again, this is, when the university contemplated this as an acquisition, you know, four years ago, it was, it was a university-financed project that was project-financed. So it was about to build faculty housing that made sense for the university on what would have been university property. Yeah.
Got it. Thank you, Calvin. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Representative Kobayashi.
Is the university capable or interested in acquiring the property and possibly using part of the property for its own use, but then subdividing and making a profit by selling another portion of the property for, shall we say, first-class presidential use?
So I would say generally, all, you know, possibilities to make it work, you know, we would want to explore. But I'm gonna state for the record that part of our work on going after this property the first time included involving a number of Manoa community organizations and understanding what they would want on the site, or more specifically, not want on the site. And one of the attractions of the university developing this property hypothetically is that we would not try to push maximum density in this, into this residential community. And the access for this property, if it's not the university, the real access is actually in the valley. And the community expressed some concern and negative positions about whoever the landowner was, you know, creating traffic coming in through that way. The current zoning on this property is also residential, in two residential lots. So even the school right now is actually a non-conforming use. That gets largely overcome by the university because if we didn't have to use, we wouldn't have to use the access through the valley, right? It would, and it would be faculty housing of the same density that already exists in Manoa. So it's not like a highly dense project. That's one of the reasons why the economics doesn't really work as much because you can't put a whole lot of units in there. Because we, we said to community groups, we're not looking to push max density up there. We want it to be something that the community will tolerate and be happy about. And so, yeah, we're closing the door on a lot of the possibilities, but it's because we're trying to be very, you know, sensitive and genuine to the Manoa community about how we would use the property if we were the ones to actually acquire it and, and develop it. Yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to the next bill. Amazing how a one testified measure takes so long. We're gonna move on to the next bill. House Bill 1430, HD1 relating to the University of Hawaii at Hilo. First up is the University of Hawaii.
Hi, aloha kako, mahalo ina mala, oku miki kaala, okahale, luna maka inana. My name is Kuyuk Muram, and on behalf of our Chancellor Bonnie Irvin at UH Hilo, we stand in support of Bill HP 1430. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? There's a lot of testifiers, but only one signed up for Zoom. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions for the testifier? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next bill. Next up is House Bill 617-HD1. First up is Hawaii Oral Health Coalition of Hawaii Public Health Institute.
Hi, aloha, chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitagawa, members of the committee. I'm Patrick Donnelly. I'm the statewide oral health coalition manager for Hawaii Public Health Institute. The Hawaii Oral Health Coalition is in support of this measure. I just want to highlight that while the state's made a really significant investment in oral health with the recent reinstatement of funding for adult Medicaid coverage, it's really critical that we fully understand the current state of oral health systems, the barriers and the opportunities that are present in Hawaii. And so we want to be able to identify more effective and systematic approaches to improving outcome. And this is exactly what this measure, you know, would probably seem to the dedicated task force. So I'm available for questions. I want to thank you all very much for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next test, Department of Health.
Department stands on its testimony in support, offering amendments, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Next is Hawaii Dental HOHC.
Hi, my name is Dr. Sand. After 15 years of working in cosmetic dentistry in California, I thought I retired to Hawaii to surf and hike, but I found out that our oral healthcare systems are broken and it has kind of revived, revitalized my passion for dentistry. So even though I'm on four different oral health coalitions, including the Dental HOHC, I'd like to testify on behalf of a frontline dentist now that's been working with these. I would call him underserved, and I would say there's a quarter of our residents in Hawaii, 300,000, who are in this category. And I'm trying to give a voice today because they don't typically have a voice, so I appreciate this. I appreciate this opportunity to give them a voice. For all of us who have had insurance and have had preventive care, we're not suffering and we're not worried about a smile before our interview and we're able to chew and get nutrition. For this other group, they're suffering. So I stand by my written testimony, Chair Yamashita and Vice Chair Kitagawa, but I do want to highlight that, like Patrick said, you guys, this committee, last year in 2022, after 13 years of being absent, reinstated adult Medicaid. But it was, it was to the tune of $25.9 million. And we were so naive, we didn't know that it had anything to do with increasing the capacity. So we've watched this trade wreck, car wreck, starting to happen since July, when four of these coalitions have been studying it. So these patients still cannot get appointments. So even the rural clinic that we helped start in Kahuku, they're now not taking new patients and they're booking their own patients six months out. So that means there is that oral healthcare crisis and we need your help. I would say the closing comments that I would recommend that we put on this bill is, let's have in addition to those 21, I would say, bosses of the moving systems. You know, there's a lot of CEOs, insurance companies, that all need to weigh in and work together in one vision. Let's put some language for frontline dentists who have this, two categories. One, they work with these patients and they have a passion for these patients. And we need to hear their voice in rebuilding it, so there's healthy smiles for all in Hawaii. Thank you guys so much for this opportunity and thank you for passing this measure last year, or the measure last year, but thank you for supporting this task force of Brain Trust.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Joseph Mayer, Jr.
Thank you, Chair. Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitagawa, and distinguished representatives. I am Joseph Mayer. I'm a retired federally, federal qualified health center dental director. I stand in support, strong support of this pragmatic approach to the oral health task force. I stand in support of my written testimony, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, questions? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next bill. House Bill 622-HD2 relating to suicide prevention. First is the University of Hawaii.
Good afternoon. I'm Deb Gabbert, professor at the University of Hawaii School of Medicine in the Department of Psychiatry. We stand on our written testimony in support of this bill, and I can answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, thank you very much. Department of Public Safety. Okay, not here. Next is Prevent Suicide Hawaii Task Force.
Hi, me again. Good afternoon. I am now presenting in my role as the Chair of the Prevent Suicide Hawaii Task Force, and we are also in support of this bill.
Okay, thank you. The Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii. Michael Galu. Not here. Okay, next is the Department of Health.
Good afternoon, members. Department stands on its testimony and comments.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Members, questions? Representative Ward.
The Suicide Task Force, Hawaii Suicide Hawaii Task Force. What is tomorrow, March 1st?
What is tomorrow?
Well, March 1st.
I don't know.
It is Self-Injury Awareness Day, which is right down your kuliana, actually. Self-Injury Awareness Day. It's actually international. It's a phenomenon that maybe not too many people know. I didn't know until a couple of days ago. But my question is, how are the rates trending with young suicides? Are they leveling off? Are they still going up, the younger females? What, what does it look like, given the importance of this codification of the Suicide Task Force?
Yeah, so we, the Hawaii data has not yet been released, but the Centers for Disease Control did just release the 2021 data for middle and high school-aged youth, and it showed a increase with nearly 50% of girls and 50% of LGBTQ plus youth considering suicide. So this represents an increase. We know that the pandemic has been hard on the mental health of our youth in particular, and so we are seeing an increase. We have been doing what we can as a voluntary board and with a number of volunteers in the community to try and address this. In fact, next week, we are holding a resilience-building training to try and get more of that out into our community.
How do those numbers, how do the, sorry, how do those numbers compare to other states? Are we lower, higher, same, what, in terms of these rates that you was talking about that just spiked?
So the rates in Hawaii are similar, except when you look at native Hawaiians and Micronesian youth, in which case they are significantly higher.
Thank you very much for the data. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next bill, House Bill 1301-HD1 relating to cancer. First up is UH Community Colleges.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. My name is Loic Le Marchand. I'm an epidemiologist at the UH Cancer Center. And I stand in support of the testimony we sent in through the Provost's Office, and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next is the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network.
Aloha Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitagawa, and Committee Members. Cindy Al on behalf of the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in strong support of House Bill one three zero one H D one relating to cancer. Cancer is the second-leading cause of death in Hawaii with twenty-five hundred deaths each year. It is the leading cause of death among Asian-Americans and the second-leading cause among native Hawaiians and other Pacific Islander individuals. It is becoming more evident that health outcomes are impacted by social determinants, your household income, how far your closest clinic is, or can you take off from work to go to a preventative screening? But there are even more layers, such as whether you live in a multi-generational household, cultural stigmas on talking about health problems, and fears of going to a doctor to get checked. These are a few of the factors that contribute to the disparities that we see in health outcomes and especially cancer outcomes. UH Cancer Center is one of seventy-one designated national cancer institutes and the only in the Hawaii Pacific region. Cancer research focusing on native Hawaiians, Pacific Islanders, and Asians, including Filipinos, is very unique to Hawaii. There are over two hundred thousand Filipinos living in the state currently, which means that for every four residents, there is one that has some Filipino ancestry. We ask for your consideration and support to help fund this multi-cohort ethnic, or cohort study to collect data to aid in future research to improve health outcomes and reduce cancer disparities for those minority populations. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, hold on.
Aloha.
Yeah, please proceed and state your name.
Aloha, my name is Patricia Cornet, and I'm from the University of Hawaii Cancer Center. Two thousand nineteen, I was diagnosed with breast cancer, and I had a mastectomy twenty twenty with an implant. And then two thousand twenty-one, it did come back as a tumor, and I had to go through chemo and radiation. And I am now trying to give back. I work for the University of Hawaii Cancer Center in the Clinical Trials Unit as a education outreach. I bring women from the Ko'olau area to Queen's Hospital on a clinical trial for mammograms. And some of them do not want to be part of the mammograms, but I do still bring them. I am full Tongan, and I am here to support this bill, and thank you so much for letting me speak today.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, moving, questions, members? Okay, moving on, we're gonna move to the next bill on our agenda. House Bill five four six H D one relating to Fuel Tank Advisory Committee. First up is the L N R.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. Ryan Imata with the L N R. We stand on our written testimony, and I'm here to, in support, and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Environmental Health Administration, Department of Health.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Roxanne Fox. Department of Health is standing in support of our testimony.
Thank you. Border Water Supply.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Kathy Mitchell with the Border Water Supply, and we stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Sierra Club of Hawaii. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none members, questions? Okay, that's the last one on our agenda. We're gonna recess for decision, decision-making. Hold on. Yeah, that's it, recess.